Call the meeting to order. Please rise. Dear God, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray that direction will lead us to our city be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the black United States of America, truly public, which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Council Mercier.
Here.
Council Noon.
Here.
Council Rourke.
Here.
Council Samaris.
Here.
Council Chow.
Here.
Council Conway.
Here.
Council Drinkwater.
Here.
Council Elliott.
Here.
Night present.
Thank you. Under Mayor's business, we have communication, remote Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept place on file by Council Mercier, second by Council Elliott. Are they ready?
With the disability?
No, the communication.
Yeah, yeah, there is.
Okay. And then we have communication. We have two speakers, Maria Crocker and Amy LaRoche, for, from the Alternative House, to speak on the recognition of Domestic Violence Month. Mr. Clark.
Amy LaRoche. LaRoche, I'll say.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Leahy and the city councilors for having us tonight. My name is Maria Crocker, and I am the Executive Director of Alternative House. And I'm here with Amy tonight to talk about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which starts October 1st.
Yes, as Maria said, my name is Amy LaRoche. I'm the Community Education Outreach Coordinator. October coming up is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we just want the topic to be on everyone's minds. One in three women and one in seven men en masse will go through domestic violence at some point, so it's definitely something worth talking about. We will be having our candlelight vigil at the front of Town Hall on October the 14th at six, starting at 6:00 PM. So if any of you could join us, we would love to see all of you there. And thank you for giving us this platforming to speak and let you all know about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all set, Maria?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And congratulations for being the new director.
Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Rourke, second by Council Samaris. We, we're gonna do a moment of silence in the later on. Should we hold off on all moments of silence by then? Okay. All right. Councilor Conway?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rules to take 5.2-Q out of order, the annual report of the Lowell Commission on Disabilities.
Sure, motion by Councilor Conway, second by Council Elliot to take out of order. Councilor Elliot. 5.2-Q. Annual Report of the Lowell Commission on Disability.
All right, thank you. All right, should I just go ahead? Okay. My name is Beth Bressel. I am the Chair of the Lowell Commission on Disability, and thank you very, very much for giving me an opportunity. I know the city council has a very busy schedule. You always have a very busy schedule, so I will move through this. And I think the best way to talk about the work that the commission is done this year and works is looking forward to doing is by way of thank yous. And I want to begin with the thank you to my fellow commission members. In March of 2020, the commission was, had lost a couple members. We had some new members, and we had the beginning of a pandemic. But despite all that, we came together. New members stepped up, and we met every month. We had productive conversations. We moved projects forward, and we are looking forward to continuing that work. I also want to give a very special thank you to Councilor Conway. He has been a stalwart supporter of the commission, an incredible resource at meetings, in between He has supported us with insight, compassion, and with his knowledge of the city, its resources, its history. So special thank you to Councilor Conway. And then moving along, a special thank you to the city manager and her entire staff. Her commitment to implementing the city's ADA transition plan is a real boost for the members of the commission, and she's been a wonderful resource, very responsive to our questions with information that we need. Additionally, continuing on, a thank you to the city solicitor, who's been so open to helping us navigate what the parameters are of what the commission can do. In particular, we came to her with a question about funding a scholarship for young people of Lowell with disabilities to pursue higher education. She was very helpful with that and opened her door for any questions that we had. Continuing on, a very special thank you too for our CFO, our city CFO, helping us navigate the protocols and procedures for revenue and expenditures and, oh, sure, sorry. Okay. And one of, one of the things that we've accomplished this year is to set in place an agreement to reimburse LTC for the cost of their closed captioning, which we've done for a number of years, but we've set in place an agreement so that we will be reimbursing them for the next three years, which gives them a better place from which to plan, knowing that Monday will be there for them, and gives us a better place to work, knowing we have something in place, and three years from now we can revisit it and do it again. So a special thank you to the CFO. Also, other people. Eric Slagel, the city's ADA coordinator, he's done a wonderful job keeping us apprised of the progress on the city's ADA transition plan. That's something that comes up often at our meetings. Everybody with a keen eye, knowing, knowing that the pandemic has slowed everything down, so. Also, thank you too, and I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounced the name, Malika Chang at the Lowell Police Department. She's absolutely wonderful. She helped the city, the commission purchased a case of clear-fronted masks that she helps, has helped us to distribute to first responders, because I think one thing we've all learned from this pandemic is how much we rely on seeing people's faces to understand what they're saying and maybe rely on reading their mouths. And so we can only imagine for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing how much more challenging the pandemic has been in terms of being able to communicate. So that was something we accomplished and very happy about. And then just recently, also in collaboration with the city's library, sent over to the Lowell Police Department visor cards. These are communication cards that people who are deaf and rely, or hard of hearing, but particularly if you're deaf and rely on sign language, can use these cards to communicate with police officers when, say, there's a traffic stop. It's in the visor, they can pull it out. And so Malika picked up a package of those to bring over to our police officers so that they can become familiar with them and maybe even have some handy. And then, again, more thank yous to Elliot Veloso, the Elections Department. Elliot came to one of our meetings, listened very attentively, wanting to know how he can help to make the city's elections more accessible. There's never an end to accessibility, there's only constant improvement. So he was very receptive and committed to what we said. And to that end, this commission has authorized funds for the Elections Department to purchase new equipment. And at our most recent election at early voting, we arranged to have an ASL interpreter on site at the early voting, the senior center early voting location, because we can only imagine how challenging it is to, to come into an election, well, anywhere, but an election site and need to communicate with the workers. So having an ASL interpreter, we're really happy about that, and we're really hoping to repeat that at the next set of elections. So that's a lot about the work we've been doing, looking forward. Got a lot of irons in the fire. We are working to, as I mentioned before, fund a scholarship for Lowell students with disabilities who are pursuing higher education. We're also working to begin a program called Friend of the Commission, where we're hoping to get some young people involved so that we can hear their voices, and they can get some insight into how municipal organizations work. So it will be a two-way. We, we benefit, and hopefully they would benefit. We're also working on a survey to help assess the needs of people with disabilities in the city of Lowell. Boy, I think there's a lot more than I've forgotten, but, but, and we're open to anything. None of these things that we've accomplished or that we hope to accomplish would be possible without the support of the city, the city councilors, the people who work over here at City Hall so hard. So this is what we're looking forward to, and, and the commission is very committed. We, we want to do anything we have to, to improve, to grow the accessibility in the city, to make the social, the political, and the economic life of the city as accessible as possible. So again, thank you so very much.
Right. Do you want Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to give special thanks to Beth Bressel, the Chair of the Disability Commission, for being here and for all she does throughout the year for, for the city and for the commission. She truly is completely dedicated, and we're very fortunate to have her serving in that role. I'd also like to recognize the other members of the commission. Sebastian Nash, who's the Vice Chair. Erica Harvey, who's the Secretary. Ron Lastman, who's the Treasurer. David Conway, who's the City Council Representative. Janelle Diaz. David Feehan. Bill Mellon. And Michael DeRoche. I just want to thank each and every member of the commission for their, their complete dedication and the ongoing projects that Beth highlighted, as well as others that they've been doing, and they are tremendous help to the city and to those who need accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think at all, at one point, we've all served on that board, and it's a, it's an honor to be on that and to help out. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Manager Donahue, you're absolutely right. Beth is a tremendous chairperson. I know quite a few of the members on the Commission on Disabilities. They do a tremendous job. We all heard that. There's much more that was left unsaid. They created the survey to better understand the needs of the people with disability throughout the city. They met with the LRTA to discuss ways to improve access to transportation for people with disability. And let us not forget that quite recently, we had a grand opening of that fully handicapped playground at Havi Park. What a tremendous asset to that neighborhood in Centerville, and I'm sure they're not done. They spend their money on things that help better this city, and I'm so proud of them. And I want to just say to our chairman, who knows disability firsthand, having had polio as a child, Dave Conway has been tremendous as a leader there. They all respect him immensely, and he never missed a meeting. He was always there. And we're very sad also to know that he will not be here. I want him to hold his head up high. He has been an outstanding city councillor, and this gives me a great opportunity to say that we think the world of him. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also want to thank the, the Commission on Disabilities, and it, it has been a, a real privilege, and it, and it continues to be a privilege to be on that, on that team. And Beth does an incredible job. And I will tell you, during those meetings, they're constantly trying to figure out how they can improve things with, with the disability, individuals with disabilities in the city. And they're also extremely thankful for the city manager and her team, and also the city council for supporting the Disabilities Commission. So again, I, I thank them very much for their hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you again, Councilor, for bringing this forward, and you have done a great job this term with the Disability Commission and being a, a strong leader from the city. So we thank you, and you did a great job. Thank you. Being right before 7:00, while we get into the general hearing, we'll do city clerk, and then we'll go right to the hearing. City clerk portion, need a motion to accept and place on file, the minutes of the Cannabis Control Subcommittee, September 13th. Finance Subcommittee, September 13th. City Council regular meeting, September 14th. Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, September 14th and 23rd. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Elliot, second by Council Conway.
Yeah, just, just a, an agenda clarification here, just so it moves. We're gonna bundle 4.1 to 4.9. And those are public hearings regarding cell, small cells facilities on existing poles. I have Representative Attorney Dan Klosnick here, who will just give a brief presentation on it, and he's got a team that will answer questions that are on Zoom, if any arise. So Johnny, if you just bundle those together and, and just read off each one to 4.8. Yeah, correct.
So read all of them.
Yeah.
So we'll open up the pub, the public hearing for Cell Co-Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless requests installation, small cell facility on existing pole number 10 at 22, 122 Chapel Street, at pole number four at 57 Court Street. Utility pole number 65-1 at 1 Huton Ave. Existing pole number 92 at 1, at 1345 Lawrence Street. Utility pole at 119 Harley Road Ave. Existing pole number seven, Wamerset Street on Central Street. Utility pole at 7 Whitman Street. And existing utility pole at 72 Main Street on West London Street. So open the hearing to all those in favor.
I'm gonna have Attorney Dan Klosnick, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Daniel Klosnick, representing Verizon Wireless, and its proposal to continue providing improved wireless service to the city of Lowell through the installation of eight additional small cell utility pole attachment. I guess I just would like to note initially that I think by utilizing the existing infrastructure, utility infrastructure, I think what Verizon Wireless is doing is, is something that is implementing a, a very creative approach to improving its overall wireless service to the residences and businesses of Lowell, just for the purposes of review and in compliance with the city of Lowell standards. The petitions were initially reviewed by the city engineer's office. The city engineer included a recommendation of approval. The, the request, or the petition for the grant of location for these eight locations included a detailed narrative, a, a set of detailed plans, and other supporting documentation, as well as proposed order. Just to give you a little bit of a description, all the, all the types of installs we're proposing this evening are substantially similar, in that what we are proposing to do is just install three small antennas that would be mounted on the top of the existing utility pole. There would be fiber and power mount cabling, and then an electric meter would be installed to the utility pole to track the service requirements for the equipment. There's no ground disturbance or ground equipment proposed. The, the equipment will be connected by fiber and, and electric service. And I guess I would just emphasize that, you know, this is an important part of Verizon Wireless's network, and it really will improve speed and reliability of service to the city of Lowell residents and businesses. And for purposes of this install, Verizon Wireless entered into a, a license with the pole on a national grid. And while Verizon Wireless is entitled to nondiscriminatory access to any utility pole right-of-way, we do work very closely with the utility owner to evaluate the pole's structural capacity, really serviceability and compatibility with the existing equipment for the small cell installation. So after completing this review, the, the locations before the city council this evening were licensed and determined to be suitable for Verizon Wireless's network requirements, and any installation will be fully compliant with Verizon Wireless's FCC licensing. So we look forward to, to working cooperatively with the city to, you know, really facilitate these installations, which will improve service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone in opposition.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, members of the council, my name's Eric Nelson. I live at 208 Fairmount Street, which is on the corner of Fairmount and Whitman Street. I'm here tonight in opposition of at least the pole on 7 Whitman Street, or at least that we pump the brakes a little bit on the installation. Having reviewed the application, I would point everyone's attention to page seven, where there are standards for location preferences. There are three set forth. This meets none of those. On the next page, page eight, there are categories that were at least preferable, and this location meets two of those. It's in a residential neighborhood and in a historic district, which is pretty small. So I just want to point the attention to that. I would also say on page nine, the applicant claims they made extensive evaluation of other poles. I don't see what those other poles are in the package, and I don't think I missed them. Page two states, this will not significantly change the appearance. I respectfully disagree. Point your attention to the drawings on page 20 and 21 of the, of the package. In my opinion, the, the example on the second to last page is much more appealing aesthetically. I question whether this is necessary at all. It really just seems to benefit Verizon. If this was cellular, if this was providing Verizon to bring files to the city finally, that would be great. If it was improving the Comcast connection for people who are working and studying at home, that would be great. And I also worry about the precedent it sets. So this is just Verizon at the top of the pole, is AT&amp;T gonna be below it, and then T-Mobile below that on the pole, so. Those are my issues with the application. Again, I'm sure it's probably not gonna do anything, but I think we should at least kind of slow it down and see if there's some alternatives to either location or design. So, thank you.
And that was the one on Whitman Ave, Whitman Street. Thank you. Anyone? Sure. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have in the past, when anyone came forward with some more information or discrepancy in any of the public hearing items such as these, well, before the pandemic, the person was in the room here, and they went out into the hallway and they discussed it. This is not possible since the person is on Zoom. Are we next week on a regular schedule in October? Are we still on a bi-weekly? What's, what, what are we doing here?
Do you want Madam Manager?
Yes.
Thank you. My, my understanding is in October, the council goes back to the regular schedule unless the council decided otherwise.
Well, I haven't heard anything otherwise, so I would assume that we'd go back to the regular schedule. And so what I would like to do is delay that particular cell number. What was that? 4.7?
4.7.
Will, I'd like to make a motion to delay that for a week, and if there's a way for this gentleman, who must be listening to what we're saying, if he could come and contact this gentleman so that they could take a look at it together, we always can come to a happy medium, and I think we could do that here, because he did have some good ideas, and he does have a concern. So I make that in the form of a motion. Could we do that?
Yeah, that's, I need to, do I need to close it first and then do the motion? All right. So a motion by Council Mercier, second by Council Conway to postpone 4.7, yep, for a week.
If there's a way that they could get?
Yeah.
Get together before?
I, I provided Mr. Nelson with the, the name of the attorney that didn't have the representation, I believe, on the, when he was down my office, so that he could get in contact with him, or he could provide me with his information, so I can pass it along to the attorney as well.
Would that be okay, sir?
That's great. Thank you. I do have the attorney's contact information. So thank you.
Okay, so maybe you could get together with him to decide something?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in op, in opposition? Council Samaris?
Thank you. Mr. Nelson brought up, you know, some important points. Madam Manager, with this
Madam Manager, would this be a problem if actually the whole package were delayed a week? I mean, because he brought up some, you know, there's always a concern about the poles. I mean, what happens in the neighborhoods, you know, safety and, and other things. We don't have all of the answers here. Would, uh, holding the whole process for a week, would that be create problems, financial problems?
You know, I, I can't speak for, you know, the petitioner. It's just, this did go through the engineer's office and all of our offices on our side unless we knew what the issue was. I mean, Mr. Nelson raises specifics on, on one of them.
On Whitman, yeah.
We just wouldn't know what to do, you know, who, who, who to
Yeah.
Contact on the other petitions.
All right. I mean, I'm in agreement with, you know, holding and allowing him time to discuss this issue.
Right.
See what other issues can be, come up. But if something were to, well, if we let everything go by, but the thing is if in his discussion with the attorneys, other information is provided to the city that might be detrimental to other neighborhoods, can that be reviewed or is it too late?
Now
Now, Mr. Clark, could you answer that?
I could have, just because we've spent a lot of time in this public hearing and all, all parties have been notified, counsel, each and every one of these applications, a buddy's have been notified on this as well. The attorney representing Verizon is, is a very, um, he's very helpful. He's very interactive. He's, he's, he's asked for things. I've asked for things from him. He's very cooperative. My suggestion, this is, the matter is voted for on, on, on to refer it to the wire inspector and it comes back down before the council floor with a wire inspector report. So that will be before the council again and I'm, I'm sure Attorney Klasnick will be available at any time.
All right. Thank you for that information.
Not to speak for him.
I think that helps everybody though. Thank you.
Except the one.
All right. Anybody else? Anyone else in opposition? That portion is closed. So now we just need a motion to, to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation for one through four eight pulling out four seven. So we're not gonna vote on four seven.
No, that, that's fine. I, I don't want to belabor this anymore, but is the attorney still on the line by chance?
He is.
Can we just get like a, Mr. Um, Mr. Nelson raised some issues that, you know, we've got
Yeah, but
These apparatuses. Can, can we get layman's terms? And I was listening, a lot of technical terms. What exactly are these units that are gonna be installed? Are they transmitters? Are they, can you just give us like a?
Yes, I
English, you know, easy explanation as to what we're, we're putting on these poles so I know, the people at home know.
All right. Attorney Klasnick?
Yes, thank you.
Could you hear the question?
Attorney Klasnick.
Could you hear the question from Counsel Elliot? Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. As, as depicted in the plans we submitted for each one of these locations, what this facility is comprised of is there will be installed three small antennas on top of each one of these utility poles. The exact dimensions as listed in the plans, they'll be nineteen point three inches high, eleven inches wide by seven point nine inches deep. In addition to that, there's some cabling and wiring installed. And as I said, there's a utility load center and then a utility meter. So the antennas themselves are fairly flush to the top. They only increase the overall height of the utility poles by approximately two point one feet. So these are very small antennas. This is something that has already been deployed in, in fact, in the city. So I, and it will provide, as far as the location, as, as has been discussed and as the name applies, these are small cell wireless facilities. They have a very limited footprint. So the ability to locate them is limited to very specific areas. And as I had already indicated, we need to work very closely with the utility provider because although we're entitled to non-discriminatory access, there are restrictions placed upon the available utility poles that Verizon Wireless can utilize based upon whatever existing infrastructure. So the process really does involve having a site acquisition firm go out, catalog a number of poles in the area which designated by the RF engineer as suitable. And then they catalog those. We have to work very closely with the utility provider, National Grid, through our licensing agreement to obtain their necessary approval as well. So this is something that takes a number of years in most instances to get to this point before the city council. So we have done a lot of due diligence. And these are, these facilities, I think, are the type of facility that really does mirror the type of infrastructure you see on utility poles from cable companies and other companies. So this isn't something that should be out of the ordinary. It's simply an additional piece of communications infrastructure that's gonna just greatly enhance the network's speed and performance of Verizon Wireless's network, which will benefit everyone who is a Verizon Wireless customer or anyone who is trying to connect to Verizon Wireless's network. So I think there's a, a substantial benefit to the city.
Okay, the last sentence is what I wanted to hear. It's, it's going to enhance the services of Verizon for people that have Verizon. Okay, thank you.
All set?
Thank you.
Need a motion in a second.
They need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Roll call?
You don't need a roll call, John.
No, oh yeah.
You don't need a
All right. Now we have four nine, four ten, and four eleven. Can those be voted?
No, I don't think that's a guess.
All right. So four nine, National Grid requests installation of twelve inch coated steel gas main along Marshall Avenue, West Forest Street, and Chelmsford Street. Open up the hearing to anyone in favor, in favor?
There is a representative from National Grid who's gonna answer any questions that may, may come upon.
Anyone else in favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, hearing one, none. That, that portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Samaras, second by Counselor Mercia. Four ten, National Grid requests installation of six inch plastic gas main three hundred and ten feet long along four to twenty-five Astor Street. I'll open up the hearing to all those in favor.
Hi, my name's Diana Cuddy. I'm from National Grid. I'm in favor of the petition.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Elliot. Four eleven, National Grid requests replacing cast iron cast pipe with plastic along Janestha Avenue. Open it up to anyone in favor?
Hi, my name's Diana Cuddy from National Grid and I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Sure.
Hi, I just wanted to get a clarifying question on that effort. So left side of the street is the gas line, right side of the street is the water. We've had a couple of water main breaks, several gas fixes on the road. And so just my concern is the state of the road, it's only a small little dead end street is just declining with all that pipes breaking and infrastructure stuff. So I wanted to see if they're gonna plan to pave the whole street or just the section that they're working on.
Sure. Um, just, I, first, just for the record, if you can identify yourself.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I'm sorry. My name is Patricia Deeney. I live on twenty Janestha Ave in Pawtucketville.
Okay, thank you. And then could the person from National Grid hear the question?
I, I did. I didn't hear it initially, but I heard it now. Typically, the paving is part of the permit restoration requirements. Right now for the, the grant of location, we're just seeking permission to move forward the project. And then what would happen is we would request a permit, a street opening permit. And the paving is usually a restoration requirement of that. Typically, I'm not exactly sure where the, it's, we're replacing a, a pipe that's there, a cast iron pipe with plastic to eliminate leaks and make it more modern, I guess is the word. And so the paving is typically wherever the new main goes, we pave from the curb to the edge of the construction area. So it's usually a pretty, pretty significant patch. But again, it's, it's typically part of the permit. Some specifics of that.
Does that answer your question or?
Somewhat. I guess half the street will be done. I was wondering if the whole street was gonna be done, but from, from a
I mean, if you ever just ask the question if you have another question, you know? If you're unclear, just ask while she's here.
Yeah, because I think they're only responsible though to repair the pa- and patch what they have actually fixed. The other side of the street is a water side of the street that has not been addressed. So there are two things going on. So that's what I just wanted to clarify, whether or not the whole street would be then redone or if it's just gonna be torn up on this side with the other side left as it is.
Yeah, normally they'll just repair what they do. So we'll look into the other side. Counselor Elliot?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand, I understand her point. I've been down Janestha Ave a number of times. It's a small road. It's already a mess. So I think the point is the first one hasn't been fixed or was, whether it was water or the prior installation of some utility. And now here we go, there's gonna be another one. And it's gonna make it even more of a mess. So it's not that long. It would be nice if it could be paved completely to clear up all the other utilities that have been there. So is, does that make sense?
That would be great.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So I don't have to leave back the street.
So once all the utilities work is done, we'll take a look at it and see. Most likely, we'll be able to get it paved, but I can't promise anything here, but we'll take a good look at it.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to refer the where am I? Yeah, motion to refer to wire inspector for a report by Counsel Conway, second by Counselor Drinkwater.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Before
Counselor Mercia?
Before we get back into the communications from the city manager, could I make a motion to suspend the rules to bring in eleven point eight under motions, which is Counselor John Drinkwater's motion? We have people here registered to speak.
Sure.
So they're not here all night.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Elliot to bring in
Eleven point eight.
Okay. Okay, eleven point eight, uh, under motions, Counselor Drinkwater requests city manager and proper department explore changing the intersection of Hoyt Avenue and Waverly Avenue from a two-way stop to a, to a three or a four-way stop, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Drinkwater?
There are registered speakers.
It'd be my preference to have the speakers go first, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We'll have the registered speakers go first.
I'm Jay McCarthy.
Hi, evening. Um, my name is Rose McCarthy. I live at forty-one Hoyt Avenue with my husband, Jay McCarthy, and my nine-year-old son. Our home is on the corner of Hoyt Avenue and Waverly Street. On Sunday, September fifth, there was a two-car accident at this intersection resulting in personal injury as well as property damage. This was a result of speeding on Hoyt Avenue in excess of fifty miles per hour on a very thickly settled area. Hoyt Avenue runs from Knapp Street all the way to Hank Street and it's used as a cut-through street to avoid the lights on Rogers Street, creating a fair amount of cars going down Hoyt Avenue at excessive speeds. The vehicle that was hit was a family of four. The impact was so severe that the car ended up coming upside down into my yard. And if it wasn't for the tree, I think they would have died. So I am requesting a stop sign on Waverly Street in hopes that this would mitigate the speeding or at a, or even speed bumps. I know that this location, given the amount of cut-through traffic and speeding that occurs as well as maybe placement of this regarding city plowing might be a hindrance. But I fear that considering it could lead into an unfortunate accident that could have been a child. It's, it's a family, it's a residence area, residential area. And I feel that the dire consequences could have been worse the day of September fifth. And I also want to say if maybe, however, in the absence of a speed bump at these locations, maybe a consideration of a four-way stop would be something that might be the necessary first step. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to come in tonight regarding this. My name is Karen Poisson. I live at fifty-four Hoyt Ave, Lowell, Mass. I've lived there for nineteen years. My property is on the corner of Hoyt Ave and Waverly. From Rogers Street to Hoyt, Waverly is a one-way. I cannot tell you how many times they are flying up from Bellrose or the other road straight up the one-way onto Rogers Street. It just happened again the other day while I was out in my yard and I cannot believe we haven't had a head-on collision on that one little spot there. We are a cut-through for everybody that wants to beat the lights on Rogers Street. The amount of traffic that goes down there, and I grew up in Lowell, so I'm gonna refer to it as Rogers Hall across from Fort Hill. The lovely people that reside there, they love walking in our neighborhood. They feel safe. They know that we're all residents in there and there's no problems. And they walk during the day to get their exercise. We have residents that walk. We have children in our neighborhood. My neighbor Rosa just spoke. Her child was outside. If that child was where this car was, we don't know what would have happened. A four-way stop, we feel, is the only way to help because they come down and they just fly off of Rogers Street. They go straight across and up either Bellrose or up towards the back of Shed. And if you have the cars coming down Hoyt, they have the stop sign. However, this woman chose not to stop. Two stop signs, she blew through broadside of the car and that family is still going through medical crisis because of this accident. If they're coming down Waverly and they have a stop sign, that will probably help a lot. They've gotta stop and we have four-way stops and the people coming up here that don't wanna take the time to read. Five signs in front of my house that say, one-way, do not enter, not a through-way, one-way, one-way. If we can get four-way stop signs there and at the other stop sign at Wellington and Hoyt, I think that would really solve a lot of the problems. But if there's something else we can come up to as a group, come to a thought to help us with the speeding traffic in there. We have children in the neighborhood that like to ride their scooters and bikes with their parents. We have people walking their babies at night. I have my grandchildren that come over to visit and it's just very danger- dangerous with these speeding cars. It's a non-stop issue there. So we've come before you all tonight to please listen to our concerns and work with us somehow and, and come up with a resolution for this very dangerous intersection. I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
No further speakers.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanna thank the, the speakers for bringing this issue to my attention. While I was out in the neighborhood, I'll just, there's not much I can really add that the neighbors haven't already said, living there at the intersection, other than to say, I did speak to other residents on Hoyt and Waverly Avenues and really, you know, two-way person that you speak to in that area, they all raise this as an issue in a dangerous intersection. So, you know, multiple others raised their concern as well, hoping that we can look into it and do something, whether it's a stop sign or other types of mitigation to make this intersection a little bit safer. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, thanks again to the speakers.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to ask for suspension of rules. I have a few people here that are going to speak on motion eleven thirteen and eleven
Why don't we just, at this point, why don't we just do the motion section of the night? Since there's people here and then we'll go back into the agenda. night, since there's people here, and then we'll go back into the agenda? Any objection with that? Motion by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Which one did you wanna start with?
Eleven thirteen, and then after that, eleven fourteen.
All right. We'll just do eleven thirteen, eleven fourteen, eleven fifteen, and then we'll just start at the beginning of the motions and go right through them. I'm sorry, you said eleven thirteen, fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay. Eleven thirteen, Counselor Chow requests city manager investigate and implement repairs and upgrades Clemente Park in the Lower Highland, Lowell Highlands, including basketball court, playground, and skate park, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Chow?
There's registered speakers.
Okay.
What, the registered speakers? Eleven point thirteen. Ryan Rourke.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, City Council. Ryan Rourke, one forty-one John Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Clemente Park Committee. As a um as a youth sports leader for the last twenty-five years and a Board of Parks member here for the great city of Lowell for the last ten, recreation and green spaces is something near and dear to my heart. The folks over there know that it's a very vibrant area. It's it's well-used. If you go there, maybe not on a rainy night like tonight, but on a on a nice night, you can see hundreds, there's there's a ton of people there. So it's a it's a it's a great area. It's it's sort of the heart of a neighborhood, and I wanna make sure that that an area like that doesn't doesn't get looked over. I live downtown now, but that is, you know, right around the corner from where I grew up, so it's a it's near and dear to my heart as well. Some of the things that I know that need to be improved over there, you know, playing basketball on a on a not a flat surface can be a little bit hazardous. There's also a lot of, you know, hydromantic needles over there as well. So things like mulch can be a little bit dangerous when when not finding that. There's some suggestions that they put out there as playground carpets, and I know that there's a number of those out there that are that are a safety issue, so something like that might be looked at installing. It's hard for the kids to play basketball. There's a lot of cracks out there. It's also something where there's, I know that there is a bocce court in the back there that has some earmarked funds for, and I know that that's in motion, but I don't want to overlook a more immediate need for safety when it comes to the volleyball courts, the basketball courts, and things of that nature. So I just wanna make sure that the city, you know, and I know that there's there's some some work with the state as well to to appropriate some funds to make sure that that's a safe and clean and welcoming environment for the folks in that area. So they asked me to speak on the behalf, and now again, near and dear to my heart, so if you guys could make sure that you guys kind of make sure that that area's not overlooked, I'd really appreciate it. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Justin Ford?
Hello, how's it going? Justin Ford, sixty-nine Hastings Street. So I'd like to thank Counselor Chow for the motion for improving Clemente Park. Clemente Park is, you know, close to where I live, and it's important for children, young adults, and families to have a good place, you know, to go during the day and or at nighttime to enjoy the weather. But when you go there and you have rusty parks, rusty benches, cracks in the foundation of the basketball court, missing nets, you know, it it's a real hindrance to the community. So I ask that you guys update the park and make a commitment to that, because when you go to play basketball and stuff like that at the park, I used to play at Stokolosa Park, you know, so I understand that people wanna make sure that when they go places, that there's there's places for these young adults to go and enjoy the, you know, what the community has to offer, what the city has to offer. So with that, I ask that the city please take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank both registered speakers for coming to speak on behalf of this motion. And before I start, I also wanna thank Madam Manager for the the past couple of years investing the funds into fixing some aspect of the park, like the bocce and and the volleyball already, in conjunction with the DPW, Mr. Shannon Cohen. The Clemente Park is is very, very important to the community in the Cambodian Town area. We're lucky to have that park. It's one of the the most busiest park in in the area. You have adults, you have families, you have children that go utilize it for sports, for recreational, for for playground, and it just need some some improvement. Right now, I think the a couple of things, the basketball courts and the skateboard park, in addition to just making it a little bit more green and trash barrels and and so forth. It's it's very important to this community, which is very, very dense. It's probably the only outlet for public space for the residents in that area, and it's so important, even, you know, that the candidate running in that district challenging me is here to speak. So it just shows that it's important to all of us. It's important to all, not just the residents, it's important to the candidate and city council candidate for downtown, even in the in the sports association, come to speak on behalf of this motion. So I ask for for even support and ask for the um the city to put some more work into it, so it be accessible and beautiful for the residents there. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lot of work been put into Clemente Park over the years. I know the administration previous and now, I remember back in two thousand twelve, when there's no light in that park. The speakers correct, hundred of people do like that park, and a lot of money being spent as well from the city to put to improve the park. Yes, there's more work to be done on the volleyball, particularly the basketball court. Fortunately, when two thousand thirteen, when the council then and the managers, what we did was having a committee. The committee actually select a person to help take care of cleaning that park. And we have concessions stand and all that. Yes, there's still more work to be done, and I need I need things that the administration can do to improve the basketball court and what all that need to be done. Greatly appreciated by the the Lowell Highland, particularly the Cambodian American community who reside and do like that park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion, night eleven fourteen. Counselor Chow requests city manager provide an update regarding the HVAC and energy conservation at the Maury School, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Chow?
There are registered speakers, Mr. Mayor. Chris Crowley?
Uh, thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor Leahy, city counselors, for letting me speak tonight. Really not my thing to come up and complain, but the Maury School heating issues have been going on for well over four years. The building's only eleven years old. Rooms range from seventy degrees to ninety-seven degrees on a given day. We ran a summer program there this year with a hundred and fifty-two kids originally. Fifteen out of the twenty-nine days rooms were over ninety degrees. We have kids get physically ill in the program. We have kids in the LEAP program that have to wear the mask, that have a very difficult time with it. Quite frankly, I have a very difficult time with it in ninety-seven degree heat, wearing a mask. The last few days, the temperatures have got cooler, so the room temperatures have gone on, gone down, but the heat will be going on soon, and they have no way to control the heat. So when the heat goes on, it blasts and blasts and blasts. The control panel has been broken for at least five years. We filled out reports on it. We've taken pictures of the thermostats. We have emailed. We've made phone calls. I watched the July fourteenth meeting, when it was said all work would be completed by September thirtieth. I saw the report on August fifth stating what needed to be done, that the annual savings just at the Maury School would be in the upwards of thirty thousand dollars if they fix the problem. And we're still waiting, which September thirtieth is Thursday, and no work has been done yet. Again, I don't like to complain, but I work with the most amazing people, administration, staff, students who can't come out here and speak, families, and it's gotten to the point where it's become very difficult for the staff, the kids, to work under those circumstances. And it's the newest school in the city, and according to the report, it uses the most energy in the city, because it's just, you go by there in January, every window in the building is open. And it it's just amazing to me that we're still sitting here after all the complaints, all the emails, all and nothing ever gets done. I was told back in February, well, there's no money in the budget, but July first, there will be. July first is coming on. August first is coming on. September first is coming on, and we still have seen no work done over there. And again, don't like to complain. I really hate going through this process of not comfortable doing it. I would like to thank Counselor Chow for supporting this motion, Counselor Rourke for always answering my text messages, pointing me in the right direction, Mayor Leahy for returning phone calls. School committee member Dylan can actually attest to the room temperatures. He walked through with me the with me this summer and can verify everything I'm saying here tonight is is truth. I have pictures I can send to anybody. I'm sure if you talk to the administration there, they'll back it up. Our kids deserve better. No doubt about it, our kids deserve better. I know this city counselor, council room would not be having meetings in ninety-seven degree heat, maybe one time, but not fifteen times. All we ask is what you would give yourself or you want want your kids to have or your grandkids to have, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Counselor Chow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you so much for the registered speaker to come speak on on this issue. He's really the best person to talk on this issue because he works at a school all four seasons, fall, winter, spring, and and summer, so he understands the different heat degree throughout the the four seasons. Basically, it's the the heat system i- it's not working. And I I don't know through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, I don't know if Commissioner Christine Clancy is available to answer, just give a a quick verbal report now to see what happened, because based on this motion response from a couple of months ago, it sounds like it's gonna be done or completed by September thirtieth, and now we we hear now that it's not being worked on yet. So I don't know if there's a brief report as to what happened? Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Manager?
Yeah, we will get you a full report. The contractor has done work at the Maury. I I understand it may not be completed, but there has work been done. There's also recommendations of more things that have to be done out there. The city's gonna be doing a site visit on Monday, October fourth, so we'll be in a better position to give you a more thorough report, once we've had the opportunity to investigate what the contractor is recommending, also after our site visit. But there has been work done at the Maury.
Thank you so much for for the verbal report. It's just that when we get something like good news like this, I think we got the the staff and the family and students excited, so, you know, we're looking forward to.
Yeah, and as I said, I think there's, you know, to the speaker's point, you know, there was, the the Maury was one of the two schools chosen for this particular program, but there are more things that have to be done as a result of what we're being told by the contractor. So this, it, they were supposed to finish it by September thirtieth, and and there's a walkthrough scheduled for the fourth, so we will be able to come back with a more thorough report.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we speak about HVAC and we talk about clean air, I just want you to know that on Tuesdays, I come in and I make my rounds to different offices, and I was in one particular office this evening for the city council meeting started, and there was an air purifier, and the cover fell off. And when the cover fell off, I saw the filter, and this is what the filter looked like. Filter was so, this is what the filter should look like. This is what the filter looks like. And I asked, oh, my God, this should be changed. There's none. I don't know who orders the stock, but we should at least have.
Yeah, the, we we've spoken to the commissioner and and DPW about getting that done and making sure that the filters are.
This isn't healthy for our employees.
Yeah, the the filters in in that particular model is designed to, as I recall, to be changed every nine to ten months, and they should be changed because we've had them.
It's like three years it hasn't been.
Well, it isn't because we didn't have them until last fall, but it they're due, so we'll follow up.
Yeah, I was embarrassed to see it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Rourke?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to back Mr. Crowley up, I do have his text messages from last year, while there was no one in the school, but also from the summer, June thirtieth, when the thermostat says ninety-eight degrees. It was forwarded, and Counselor Chow and I got a response that it's an issue of setting the temperature, and we had to take care of it, and it would be done very soon. So it's disappointing as councils when you tell someone, you know, lives, works in the city, that the job's gonna be taken care of, and, you know, we're here three months later with with nothing. So hopefully, this could be expedited. The temperature in the school is always approaching triple digits, no matter what, the temperature is outside, and I would hope that this will be taken care of ASAP. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just repeat what the pro- program that was reported was to regarding the HVAC and energy conservation, that was what the grant was for, and that grant and the contractor has done work there. However, after that work was done, we're being told, and we're waiting for the report, that there's several more items that have to be done, and so we're gonna have to look into that. So so the, there was work done, and as I said, they're wrapping up their work. They supposedly have a report coming our way, which is saying other other action items have to be taken at the Maury. So we'll get that full report.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Counselor Noon?
Motion to suspend the rule, Mr. Mayor, to take up a subcommittee on utility, technology subcommittee report. We have a lot of people in the back there waiting for that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Yeah, sure. Motion by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Elliott to take up the subcommittee report. Nine point one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Uh, the Utility and Technology Subcommittee resumed the meeting on September twenty-third, Mr. Mayor, at five thirty, to discuss the community trade aggregation contract. At the September fourteen meeting, we directed our energy managers, Catherine Most, to get information, supplement for community trade aggregation options to mitigating any increase in energy cost. At the meeting, we have counselors, member of the committee, we have Counselor Drinkwater, we have Counselor Samaras. Also joining us by Zoom is Counselor Chow. The city, we have representative from the city, Catherine Most, the city energy manager, Christine McCall, DPD directors, as well as a broker representative from the Colonial Power Group. At the meeting, we talked, we have information to hand out on each counselor, a desk, taught, lay out a short and long-term solution that would help the customer, the resident of Lowell, mitigating the extra costs. With that, the committee, we had a couple of speakers spoke. With that, the committee members, by Counselor Drinkwater's motion, and seconded by Counselor Samaras, motions to recommend to this council, Mr. Mayor, to adopt the renewal CCA contract to reflect the continued rate of forty-five percent of renewable energy. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that we have some speaker, but after that, I would would like very much to have a roll call on these motions that would unanimously pass at a subcommittee meeting.
Okay. You have the speaker?
Uh, Win Flint.
My name is Win Flint, and I live at two oh five tenth street. I woke up to the issues around climate change when a town not far from my family, home in California, burned. in California, burned to the ground and a family friend died. It was all over the national news because it was so horrific. This year, the largest fire in California came within three miles of my father's house. He is eighty-five and has been given evacuation warnings three times a summer. So far, thank you, thank you, so far Lowell has not seen the worst effects of climate change, but it's only a matter of time. So I figured out that climate change now was a threat to my family, not sometime down the road, but I really didn't know anything about it or what I could do to help. I knew this group called Three Fifty was doing stuff, so I joined up with them and have spent the last two years learning about this immense subject. I may have trouble following the minutia of legislation or the deeper science, but it was crystal clear, beyond a shadow of a doubt, in your face, that we have to reduce our reliance on fossil oil and fossil gas, and soon, now, like yesterday, it's the responsible thing to do. But I know that it may cost more. I looked at the number, and it's about one week's groceries for my family per year. To me, that is not really a small amount of money, and if it is a good amount of money to me, then it is likely even more impactful to lower-income folk, so this put me in a quandary. This would mean that proportionally, I would be asking lower-income people to pay more money, which doesn't sound wise or good, yet it is beyond obvious that we need to curtail our CO2, or we will be handing the next generation a living hell. I wondered if there is a way to offset this increased cost, and I thought about my own multifamily. It is a hundred years old and was drafty as all get out, but we found some extra money and put in insulation and cut our energy bills. But I know that most landlords are not doing that for their renters, and they are having to pay some very high costs for their energy in the winter. So I thought hand-in-hand with this necessary increase in renewable energy should be an intense effort on behalf of the council to assist our Lowell families in lowering their utility bills by helping them arrange energy efficiency services. All the renewable energy in the world is not gonna help get our energy costs down if we still have to heat leaky old houses. I know Mass Save does some of this, but much of our housing stock is so old that they require so much work before Mass Save will even touch them. I know very well there are only so many resources to take care of competing demands on the city budget, and I heard most of them tonight, it was very clear. I was thinking this over on my walk and got to thinking about another time in our country's history we were asked to do what looked near impossible. It was December seventh, nineteen forty-one, Pearl Harbor, as you know, and FDR knew the right and obvious response was immediate war to protect our nation. That was clearly the right thing to do. What we often forget today is nobody had two dimes to rub together. No one had any money. There was no huge standing army, little military gear, no planes to speak of, and much of our navy had just been decimated. On the face of it, we had little to work with, but somehow, the smart people figured out ways to finance what needed to be done, and we became the arsenal of democracy. I believe our city council has access to the same smarts to make the best decision for our children and grandchildren. Please vote for the forty-five percent renewable energy.
Jonathan Grossman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Madam Manager and councilors. I'm Jonathan Grossman, I live at eighty-three Varnum Avenue in Potagefield, and I'm also involved with Three Fifty Mass. Uh, Win put it very clearly why we need to address this. It's really important that we maintain our additional forty-five percent Class One RECs, as we've been doing, to address the climate crisis. Everybody's gonna have to deal with it, and Lowell needs to do our part, and we've been leading on this. We're very proud of that, and we wanna continue doing it. Yes, it will cost a little bit more this year, as Win pointed out, but we can't afford not to pay it. The cost of not paying it will be much greater down the road than addressing it at this time. And with respect to our residents who are low-income, there are some options for them. They can opt down, out, if they want to. Many are eligible for the R2 low-income discounts of, uh, which according to National Grib website is thirty-two percent. And as, uh, the previous speaker mentioned, if we're s- really serious about addressing the issue for low-income people, the solution is energy efficiency, that would be a much more significant decrease to anybody's energy bill than addressing this, uh, avoiding this small increase. And we believe that there are things the city could do to make that happen, perhaps hiring somebody to work with the energy manager, or to assist people in accessing these programs, or finding some way to work with landlords to help renters, and we would urge the city to consider those things, and in the meantime, we strongly urge you to continue the p- program of forty-five percent additional. Thank you very much.
Stephen Malagodi.
Steve Malagodi, Three Fifty Mass of Greater Lowell, I have a nice condo over at, uh, two hundred Market Street. We wanna thank the subcommittee, the energy manager, the sustainability council, and everyone who were, who has been involved in this, this process of renegotiating Lowell's historic CCA agreement. The subcommittee's decision to recommend that we stay at forty-five percent Class One RECs above the state mandate is both prudent and wise. Forty-five percent is almost halfway to one hundred, which is where we need to be over the next decade or so. It will not be free, but this is work that must be done, and how we go about it is crucial. Failure is not an option. If you look at our organization's statement of principles, it says, quote, "We believe in equity and justice. We know that climate change is an issue that intersects with ecological, social, racial, economic, indigenous, and immigrant justice. We seek to advance equity and justice in our campaigns." As far as I and my colleagues at Three Fifty Lowell are concerned, we do not just seek to advance equity, we insist on it. I did not always have a nice condo on Market Street. I come from a real-life, lived experience of poverty in my youth, real poverty you'd expect in Arkansas or Mississippi, but here, here in Massachusetts. I'll spare you the details, but let's just say that these days, when I'm out in my nice car, delivering diapers for the Lowell Alliance, I climb the creaky stairs, go down the damp hallways with the peeling paint and the smell of mold in the walk-ups of back Central, South Lowell, Centerville, Lower Highlands. I meet the women with, women with their babies, struggling, and I see my mother sixty-five years ago. I know what it means, I know what five bucks means when you don't have it. A very wise person, two thousand years ago noted, "The poor will always be with you." This does not mean that there's nothing to be done about it, it's a simple statement of fact. Another very wise person in nineteen fifty-five, the composer John Cage said, "What we need to do is make the world safe for poverty," meaning to make it safe to be poor, which it is not. For every mother in the world, whether you're a rabbit, or a duck, or a fox, or an alligator, or a human being, the number one priority is to keep your baby safe. What we have before us is a matter of safety. A world with an atmosphere two degrees above pre-industrial levels is not safe, and for millions, it will not be livable. Let us really help those in poor housing to improve their housing, to keep them warmer in the winter and cooler in the increasingly hot summers. Let's really reduce their bills with energy efficiency programs and renewable clean energy. Let's really help them to live. We will not do that by shortchanging them with a posture of saving five dollars now in exchange for a future of increasing hardships. Forty-five percent is almost halfway to one hundred. We cannot go forward by marching backwards, forty-five and forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Ford.
Hello, uh, Justin Ford, again, uh, sixty-nine Hastings Street. So, as many of my residents, uh, know, the city is currently up to extend the contract for the Community Choice Aggregation Plan, and this extension would be three years. I stand before the council today asking for the city to support and maintaining Lowell's current requirement to purchase forty-five percent of additional renewable energy, based, uh, beyond the state minimum in their aggregation energy supply. Like another resident said, "You're leaving the climate problem for the young generation, my generation. We deserve better." I'd like the city to move our goal to a hundred percent on the next contract, but as of right now, I ask that at least we maintain our forty-five percent commitment. As many of you would agree, climate change is a real, it's happening right in front of all of us. It's time to take aggressive and necessary action. I also implore that the city hire a contractor to look at the immediate and long-term impacts of climate change on our c- community. It's time to invest in preventative action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thanks all the speakers and my committee members, as well as my councillor members as well, that, with that said, I would ask for a roll call, as I stated, uh, Councillor Drinkwater's motion, second by Councillor Samaras, to recommend to this council adoption of the renewal CCA contract to reflect the continued rate of forty-five percent of renewable energy. So, I ask for a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, right. So, motion by Counselor Noon, seconded by Councillor Samaras. Counselor Samaras?
I'd like to speak on the mo- on the, on the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I attended that meeting, and they're correct, it is very important that we support where we are today, not go backwards, but support the forty-five percent. Uh, first of all, Madam Manager, I wanna thank you for allowing Catherine Moses to make her presentation, but you have to know that she did an excellent job in that presentation. She did, I asked a question about the increase in the, uh, cost of energy, and that would be approximately eight dollars a month for the average family. And over the years, I've worked with a lot of families, and they may not s- not sound like a lot of money, but to some families, that's the difference of medicine and other is, and other, uh, household needs. But the thing is, the one thing that Catherine did, uh, talk about, that yes, they had an option to opt out, but more important, there were grants and other avenues that she would help in seeking funds to help people who this could be, uh, problematic, and I think that's important. Uh, it was great when she actually, you know, gave her telephone number, said, "Look, it's my telephone number, this is where people can call me, and I can, I," and that's what people have to hear, that's what our constituents have to hear, that people who work for the city will go beyond the next step, and that they'll be available to talk about and work with to help, uh, people in need. And I was very impressed with that, and I was impressed with the information that she was able to provide on this subject, which, as was said by many of the speakers, far more eloquently than I can at this point, that if we don't do something now, I mean, what, what are we talking about in our future for our grandchildren and their children? So, uh, again, I just wanna thank you for, uh, having people who take their position responsibly and do, and, and about the presentation she made, it was, it spoke volumes about the administration. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do I need a motion, accept the report of, report of progress, or re- and accept the motion as is by couns- well, I already did that, right? Yeah. So, roll call?
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine years.
Thank you. All right, so, again, we, uh, need a, uh, well, we're still under suspension, right? We need another motion to go into suspension, or we still under sus- are we under?
Mr. Mayor?
He wants Counsel Chow. Okay, all right, so, Counselor Chow?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, the, uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, to the chamber the family of former City Councillor John Mahoney. And, um, at this time, uh, we delay the moment of silence, and I'd like to return back to that part of the agenda, and I would like to, um, start, if, um, the, uh, member of the council don't mind, I would like to start with, uh, a memoriam on, uh, former City Councillor John Mahoney. It is fitting tonight to return the memory and kindred spirit of former City Councillor John Jack Mahoney to these hollow council chambers. A lifelong Lowellian, John Mahoney, ninety, passed peacefully on Friday, September seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, surrounded by his loving family in Florida. A man of all seasons, he clearly was ahead of his time, with his holistic approaches to poverty, the disenfranchised, the hungry, and the homeless. Though he served as a member of the city council in nineteen seventies, in the tur- his determination and council vote to correct systemic injustice, economic inequities, and assistance for the poor residents of Lowell, would still echo through in the council chamber today. This person counsels work for public health, housing, cultural sensitivity, and social justice are all topics on which the then-Councillor Mahoney focused. During the, during his council tenure, he was proud to serve with such individuals such as Councillors Lemay, Songus, Howe, Rourke, just to name a few. Mr. Mahoney was a great storyteller. One of his favorite story was following a controversial budget vote as a councillor. His reelection bid found himself plus two additional candidates named John Mahoney on the ballot, including one who lived only two streets from his home. Unfortunately, the tactic work and his reelection was unsuccessful. For the rest of his years, he always said that he was a lousy politician, but a great social worker. Developing his high work affects at a young age, John worked as a teenager being a caddied Vesper Country Club, where he carried double bags for seventy-five cents per eighteen holes. While caddying, he steered his life toward Catholic education. He attended St. Patrick's School in the Acre, and then went on to graduate from Keith Academy. His love of education and opportunity provided by this knowledge propelled him to attend Merrimack College, and then received his master's degree in social work from Boston College in nineteen fifty-five. Following this, he went directly into the US Army, where he was commissioned a lieutenant and was assigned as Director of the Mental Health Unit for the Fort Bliss William Beaumont Army Hospital in Texas. He returned to Lowell to work in the city of Lowell DPD during President Johnson's War on Poverty. Following this, he served as Director at CTI for three years, and then thirty years overseeing homeless shelters for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as Director of Transitional Services from which he retired. He later returned to work for CTI in his golden years to further the cause of helping those less fortunate in Lowell. Mr. Mahoney was always a perfect gentleman with a quick and kind sense of Irish humor. As a passionate Boston sports fan, he enjoyed his retirement years playing golf, engaging his many friends, and even on occasion was coaxed into a karaoke song or two, crooning out one of his favorites. He raised six children and taught them that though life may be unfair, it is our responsibility to make the world fair. He was the late husband of the late Mary Ellen O'Connell Mahoney, and previously the late Marjorie Cochrane Mahoney. Jack was born in Lowell on May ten, nineteen thirty-one, he attended St. Patrick's School in the Acre, graduated from Keith Academy in nineteen forty-eight, Merrimack College in nineteen fifty-three, and received his master's in social work from Boston College in nineteen fifty-five. He is survived by three daughters and two sons, Mary Jo Santora and her partner Jimmy Sampson of Key Largo, Florida, Mary Jo was the former superintendent of the Great Lowell Vocational School, Karen Gurney and husband Barry of Newport, North Carolina, and Allison Chass and her partner Nell Murphy of Drakehead, David Mahoney and wife Lisa of St. Augustine, Florida, Thomas Mahoney of Sunset Beach, California, and was also father to late Kevin Mahoney and his late brothers and sisters, Richard Mahoney, James Mahoney, Mary Lou Wilder, Elizabeth Betty Bohenko. I hope, um, I just wanna thank, uh, the family of Mary Jo for entrusting me to, um, writing and reading Mr. John Mahoney's memoriam. I don't know if I have all the facts correct, but, uh, certainly his spirits and his contrib- contribution certainly is, um, alive and well in the chamber today. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recognize Mary Jo Santora, her daughter, and former superintendent of Great Lowell Vocational School here, uh, today. And I don't know if you would like to address the chamber first. I'm sure many of the councilor members here tonight, they are aware of, and they knew Mr. Mahoney very well. I'm sure they would like to say something. I'm not sure if you want to go first or if you would like the council to go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So I'll read the citation to the, for the family. So we have a citation for the family of John Mahoney. "Be it here known to all that the City of Lowell Commonwealth, Massachusetts hereby offers its sincere gratitude, recognition to John J. Mahoney." John was born and raised in Lowell and received his master's in social work in nineteen fifty-five. He enlisted into the Army, commissioned as a first lieutenant, and was made head of the mental health unit at Fort Bliss Williams Beaumont Army Hospital. John pioneered a new holistic approach to social work and due to his empathetic and trustworthy ways, he excelled at what he did. Something most notable about John was that he had retired twice. For thirty years, he worked at the Commonwealth as Boston's regional administrator for transitional living where he oversaw homeless shelters statewide. He retired in the early seventies, which did stick, and he tried his hand at substitute teaching and drove a van for Catholic charities before working as the Director of the Shelter Resources Community Teamwork in Lowell until the second retirement in two thousand eleven. John remarkably had a deep understanding of the clinical nature and poverty and focused his efforts on finding and building the opportunities through training programs. John also served on the city council with Paul Songus. His favorite story was to tell that he was a great social worker but a lousy politician. John leaves behind a great legacy of love, family, friendship, and service to others and will be always remembered as a man of character and heart. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, hereby all the best to the John Mahoney family. The entire City of Lowell is proud to commemorate this distinguished individual and his service to the city, given this twenty-eighth day of September by myself and the entire city council. So who's going to come up for it?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you for the recognition and the acknowledgement. My father would get a real kick out of spending his last night in the chambers. He really would. He would think this was a real hoot. And he was a great guy and he, he loved people and people loved him and he worked really hard with the people in the City of Lowell, especially the impoverished and those that were underserved. So thank you so much for the acknowledgement and the recognition. It means a lot to the family. Thank you.
Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have the chambers docken for Gilbert G. Campbell, ninety-one, of Tinsborough, Massachusetts. A highly respected and successful Grey Lowell real estate developer who was still working, passed away on Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, after a brief illness at Lowell General Hospital, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of over thirty years of Marilyn T. Demures Campbell, who survives him. Born in Centerville section of Lowell on March thirtieth, nineteen thirty, the son of the late E. Gaston and the late Idola Dubey Campbell. He attended Lowell schools and was a graduate of Lowell High School in the class of nineteen forty-eight. Later in his life, Gil would be elected to the Lowell High School Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame in two thousand nine. Gil's incredible professional career, which spanned over seven decades, was first as a home builder, real estate developer for both commercial and residential properties, entrepreneur, and later as a hotelier, restaurateur, professional sports owner, and well-renowned with his wife Marilyn in the thoroughbred horse industry. As a community leader, Gil was a founding member of the Lowell Plan, original co-owner of Lowell's first professional sports team, Lowell Lock Monsters, past board member and chairman of the Northern Middlesex Chambers of Commerce, and past president of Vesper Country Club. In his homebuilding career, he was a founding member and past president of the Lowell Home Builders Association, president and lifetime director of the National Home Builders Association. Real estate was not the only area where he excelled. When Gil and Marilyn entered the horse racing and breeding industry, they created a very successful and well-known thoroughbred stable of horses that were recognized with the two thousand sixteen Florida Breeder of the Year and have raced in the world-class Triple Crown, the Kentucky Derby, the Preakness, and the Belmont Stakes. In addition to his Lowell High School alumni recognition, Gil was also selected in the nineteen sixties as a New England Home Builder of the Year, in two thousand two, the Northeast Builders Hall of Fame, and the New England Turf Writers Hall of Fame for his contributions to racing in New England. Humble in nature, Gil was a quietly very generous to his community with both his time and resources. Although highly successful to those who knew him best, he was very comfortable with everyone he met and never forgot his roots or the City of Lowell. A man of many passions, Gil enjoyed playing golf with his family and good friends and traveling with clam bakes at the beach and toasting smores on the fire pit. Beside his wife Marilyn, he is survived by a daughter, Susan Campbell, and her husband Jeffrey Shea of Andover; his son Gary Campbell and his wife Emma of Andover; five grandchildren, Caitlin Silver and her husband Warren of Salem, New Hampshire; Justin Bassinelli and his wife Catherine of North Andover; Alex Campbell and his wife Julia of London; Eliza Campbell of Andover and Zoe Campbell of Manchester, New Hampshire; six great-grandchildren, Jaden, Jacob, and John Lawless Markert; Dominic and Liam Bassinelli and Malcolm Gilbert Campbell; a brother-in-law, Donald Demures of Manchester, New Hampshire; many nieces and nephews. He was also the brother of the late Richard Campbell, Norman Campbell, Mildred Moots, and Aleene Nicholson. That was Gilbert Campbell, but people should know that while he was a member of the Lowell Plan, that was the beginning, he helped create the beginning of Lowell High School's public-private partnership with the Lowell Plan. He has received, as you heard tonight, many types of awards, but I think the award he valued best was being a distinguished alumnus of Lowell High School. So I'd like to have the chambers docken for his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? We're all set. We'll docken the chambers. Thank you. While we're still under suspension, we'll just do one more item while we have people here. We'll take up votes from the city manager. Six, one. Vote, appoint city auditor and establish salary. Okay. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth of Massachusetts City of Lowell in City Council vote to appoint Kelly Oaks to the position of city auditor for the City of Lowell and establish a salary for the position. Any questions? Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Subcommittee did discuss this, I believe it was referred, but we did get an explanation on the search process. I don't know if the manager wants to go through it, but the city did hire the Collins Center out of UMass Boston to essentially do an employee search for the auditor, transportation engineer, and the assessor. Why don't I refer to you, Madam Manager, I don't have to repeat, but this was a candidate that was brought forward and there wasn't any recommendation out of the Finance Subcommittee nor there should be. This is an appointment by the entire city council. So, but I'm going to support the candidate.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. This position was referred to our office to conduct a search and to work regarding the reviewing and vetting candidates and to bring forward to the council recommendation or recommendations. I'll ask Connor Baldwin, who was involved with working with the Collins Center as well as this process, to address the details.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Just to give a little bit of background, and we did share this with the Finance Subcommittee earlier this evening, in late May, the council had voted to adopt the Department of Revenue recommendation, which made a change to the day-to-day reporting relationship of the auditor but retained the appointing authority of the council. It was at that next meeting that the council asked the city manager to engage a private consultant to assist with the search. The city brought, as was just mentioned, the city brought on the UMass Boston Collins Center to create a job profile, to conduct recruiting, and to reach into their professional networks. There were two viable candidates that were selected by the screening committee and were brought in for interviews. The screening committee consisted of myself, the city deputy CFO, the HR director, and we consulted with the current interim city auditor, Cheryl Wright. It was the unanimous recommendation and is the unanimous recommendation of the screening committee that Kelly Oaks be appointed city auditor. Kelly is the current city treasurer. A copy of her resume was included in the packet for the city council. Kelly comes to us previously from the city of Lawrence but has been with the City of Lowell for just over two years now. She is a Lowell resident and does a wonderful job here in the city, so we make that as a recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Any questions? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Rourke? Roll call?
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott. That's nine yeas.
Yes.
I know you don't want to, but would you like to just say a word? You just made it. So congratulate.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you all for your support and allowing me the opportunity to put my experience to work for the city in the capacity of city auditor. It has been a pleasure serving as the city treasurer, but I do welcome this new challenge. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Elliott?
Just briefly, I want to thank the administration for the search and certainly our new city auditor. I can tell you from the management reports that we've seen from our independent auditor, the annual audit report, Ms. Oaks has made great strides in one of the most significant aspects of the office that have been consistent issue that we've seen, and that is reconciliation of the cash. So I want to thank her for putting that, you know, those issues and putting the treasurer's office in order and look forward to her service in the auditor. We've been looking for an auditor for an awful long time. And I'm sure the employees and the city and the finance team did a great job in selecting this candidate. So thank you and we appreciate all your effort.
Thank you. Counsel Mercy?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I worked hard on that cash reconciliation, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Counsel Mercy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to our new city auditor. We have a very special seat for you next week and it's over there near our city solicitor, so welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be there.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then lastly, with regard to the salary and recommendation, I don't know what the wish of the council is. We could make a recommendation or we could deal directly with Ms. Oaks on that to resolve that.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we delegate the salary recommendation to the city manager, considering they've been working with the Collins Center as well as our new auditor. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Mercy. All of those in favor say aye? Thank you. All right. Now, let's see.
So, Mr. Mayor, should we take the next item appointing? We don't have a treasurer and we need a treasurer.
Yeah. I think I'd like to just get, go right through the motions and then get back to the agenda. Does that sound all right? We'll get those done. So we left off at eleven fourteen? So we'll go to eleven fifteen? Eleven fifteen, Counsel Chow, request city manager revisit the area of River Meadow Brook and enlist Commonwealth of Massachusetts to assist with the trash and needle pickup while providing proper outreach to the homeless encampment, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as you mentioned, this motion's revisit of an earlier motion in the year when I asked the city manager's office to reach out to the state to help with the River Meadow Brook cleanup. And I believe I have that report in front of me. The state was to clean up back on Monday, January twenty-fifth. I'm not quite sure if that went through or not because that was in the midst of COVID-19. I also want to look to reach out to the state to see if they could also help address the home issues. That's a big issue in the city, in the state, and nationally. And I remember when Governor Baker came to visit here last week, wanted to ask about the homeless and South Carmen, and he mentioned that was a city issue, but the River Meadow Brook is along the state property. It's a long shot, Madam Manager, maybe ask to reach out to them if it's on state property. And you could imagine something happened on four ninety-five or one twenty-eight. In those situations where you have encampment of homeless people, what kind of resource they could provide to help with the city? And also, you know, there's just a lot of trash in that area and from the previous reports, a lot of illegal dumping as well, and maybe ask the state to come back and clean it up again. it up again. Lowell's a gateway city, and that's along the Lowell Connector as well. Lowell Connector is the entrance to, it's a gateway into the city. They just look really, really dirty, very uninviting, not only to the residents, but also to people coming to visit the city. So if you could try to clean up that area, deal with the trash issues, and also deal with the homeless issue along that River Meadow Brook and Lowell Connector, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 11:01, Counsel Rourke, request city manager contact Massachusetts Department of Transportation, cut back the grass and trees along VFW Highway from Drakehead to the town line and street sweep some of the intersections and areas described, seconded by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Rourke.
Mr. Mayor? I have a similar motion, 11:10, that probably just makes sense to combine with this and take it up at the same time, if there's no objection.
All right. 11:10?
11:10.
All right. We'll just take that up altogether. Counsel Drinkwater's motion, request city manager coordinate with MassDOT regarding maintenance of overgrown trees and brush at the Hunts Falls Rotary. Seconded by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to stem a communication with State Representative Tom Golden and Mark Crapman from the DOT. Mr. Crapman has requested that it's fully placed the motion to you, Madam Manager. Then, once you submit it, they can get started on the area, VFW Highway. The reason for the long addition to the motion is, you know, they asked for specific sites and what wanted to be done, so feel free to add to it if you wish. But thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
All set. Counsel Rourke's motion was actually much more extensive than mine, which was just related to the Rotary, so figured it just makes sense to take them up at the same time. But Counsel Rourke's motion covers it. Thank you.
Any other comments? The street sweepers have been up there sweeping and starting their work, but Counsel, I mean, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. You know, we did get an earmark that Rep. Golden had gotten, and that was to help to have, it was a MassDOT earmark. So, long story short, that contract is being finalized, so that's another assist, and we'll certainly direct attention there with that earmark, as well as contact MassDOT.
Thank you. 11:02, Counsel Rourke, request city manager have areas in and around the course, the course for this year's Bay State Marathon cleaned up and prepared for the October 17, 2021 road race, seconded by Counsel Samaras, Counsel Rourke?
I think it's almost similar to the prior motion, but just the areas in and around the raceway. I know many people looking forward to it this year with last year's being canceled, so this motion came to me last week to bring it forward, so thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 11:03, Counsel Rourke, request city manager and Parks Department explore the installation of a volleyball court at LeBlanc Park, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater?
There is a registered speaker here.
On Zoom?
On Zoom. Matthew LaLasha.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on Counsel Rourke's motion. This motion is an outgrowth of a recent cleanup event that the Patacaville Youth Organization had at the baseball fields behind the Wang School. At said event, it was noticed that the newly installed baseball field that we had put in place at McNamara Field has now had a large amount of cricket and volleyball being played in the outfield, which while it's wonderful that the parks are being used at a time when baseball is not as prevalent on the fields, it has completely destroyed the entire left field and left center field grass area. And the members that were utilizing that field, the members of the community, approached and were just disappointed that they didn't see that there was another option for them. And so those individuals spoke with both myself and Counsel Rourke about if there was another opportunity, another solution. And while there are some volleyball courts and some other options, in discussions that I had, and I think Counsel Rourke has had, with Shannon Cohen from the Parks Department, there is area, there is some land that might make sense to utilize potentially for a volleyball court there, which would turn what is an unfortunate situation of leaving the baseball fields in a poor condition in the offseason into a positive, adding, you know, another safe, fun environment for the members of the community to utilize. So I just wanted to speak in favor of exploring this, and if there is an opportunity for anybody in our organization to assist, in PYO, we would move forward to do that with Counsel Rourke and all other members of the council and the members of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The cleanup day that we were out there, members of the Indian community, we spoke with them, and they showed us a spot where they would appreciate if possible we could put a volleyball court there. And speaking with Mr. Cohen, he does believe that it is doable. That's the motion for tonight, and to hopefully check it out and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Counsel Mercier, request city manager have proper department place a berm in front of 110-124 Barber Street and any other home on Barber Street that has had their front yard soil running down the street and washing away, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Counsel Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the city manager. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report that you gave. I did give this report to one of the people that live on that street, and according to what I'm seeing here, and I could have taken my motion off the agenda, but I'd like to amend the motion, and instead of asking for berm, I would like to amend it to, say, to install granite curbing, because it said it's probably more reasonable to do that. But as part of the paving program, DPW will consider installing granite curbing and necessary stormwater infrastructure at these locations. If they could, I don't know if this is a capital improvement or what, but if we could keep that street in mind. It goes on a hill. I looked at it. It's, and I will say that DPW did go and put the soil down and the grass seed and stuff, and I appreciate that. But heavy rains wash it out again, so it's like putting good money into bad. So I just wanted to say that a solution would be, and I'm only asking for the berm, but it seems like it's less expensive to put the granite curbing, so that'd be fine if we could do that. That'd be fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Counsel Mercier, request city manager put forth summit regarding homelessness, mental health issues, drug addiction in the city, seconded by Counsel Noon.
Second, Mr. Mayor, if I may, can combine Counsel Mercier with mine, 11.7, similar around those issues?
Sure. 11:07, Counsel Noon, request city manager provide a report regarding what the city is doing to address homelessness and how these funds from the CARES Act are being used to help solve the problem, and if there should be an emphasis on a housing-first approach, which has worked in other cities. Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm going to say, I don't want anybody to take offense to it, as I always preface, it seems, because I don't see any blame anywhere. There's no blame anywhere. But we got to admit the fact that we have homeless people galore, and it's becoming more prevalent. It's, you go up Appleton Street, people are sleeping in doorways. You take a walk over to the South Common, people are all over the place. And I felt bad, because they did a great job, the DPW, to do a clean sweep and make it look good for the governor. I understand that. But at the same token, I was let down a bit, because we had a woman that was a neighbor across the street, a taxpayer, and she said, "You should have came here last week, or the other day, or come back next week." And she started telling him about what was there. And I don't mean any disrespect. I mean, I would like to clean my house, too, when I know I'm having company. It's no different than that. But the fact remains that this isn't what really is visible. I don't feel like he saw the true area. And I know he's going to give us $400,000, and I appreciate it, but, you know, we need the field, but is anybody going to come there when people are sleeping in their tents and their sleeping bags, and needles are all over the place, and feces, and everything is all over? I know that. I see it every day. I see people sleeping in the elements when it had just rained. They're still out there in a sleeping bag. That's dampness. We have homeless people. Now, let me just say that if someone is couch surfing, because they're the working poor, and they can't afford an apartment, I sympathize with that person. I want to get that person a home, an apartment. They can handle it. It's just that they can't afford it. I understand that, and that's where it comes in. But when you have people out on the street that are strung out on drugs and shooting up in broad daylight, right in front of my face, and everybody else's, I'm sorry to be saying this, but this isn't what the city is supposed to be when we call this a destination city. Are they destined to come here to look at what they're seeing and praying to God that none of their family ever becomes homeless? You get mental illness. You get people that would be normal if they only had someone to monitor their medication. They would be straightened out. But that's not happening, and they're vulnerable, and they're being stabbed, and they're being in a fight, and I see it. I see these people. I talk to these people. And a lot of the people that I talk to don't even live in Lowell. They come from Bill Ricker. They come from Lawrence. You don't see this happening in Andover or Newburyport. You don't see it. But we have every amenity that you could think of. We have organizations that help to feed you, that help to give you clothes, that Salvation Army, the CTI, Food Bank. I could go on and on and on. It's like Lowell is a beacon saying, "Come on to Lowell." And I don't mind it if we could afford it and take, help everybody, but it's becoming overpowering. Someone has to understand this. And I'm not throwing blame at anybody, but we need to do something. You had the place in Boston, and the mayor there, Janie, she got a hotel for them to stay in and people to be monitored. These people don't need housing. They need to be monitored. They need a facility to put them in. Solomon Mental Health is closed. These people were thrown out on the street. This isn't fear. These people are somebody's children, somebody's father. And I'm so sad to see this every day. You go downtown, the same thing is happening. They're sleeping in doorways. They're going in the bathroom. We're going to have a meeting with the downtown people. Go to Jay's Food Store, which used to be Jerry's Food Store. It's frightening. It's frightening to go there. And these people spent their hard-earned money to refurbish the place, only to have people hanging around outside, tearing the Portuguese flagpole apart, throwing the flag into the street. None of this is good. It's not good. People can't go to the park and enjoy themselves. I'm going to tell you, many years ago, I didn't want my kids riding their bikes on the street, because I was afraid they'd get hit by a car. We loaded the pickup truck, which was really like a piece of junk, but it got us to where we had to be. We put all the bikes there. We brought them to the South Common. They rode around, and they were safe. In the winter, it was snowing. We brought our kids to the South Common to let them go sledding. And as they got older, we let them learn how to ski, to see if we'd spend our money on all that equipment for something that they liked to do, and they did, and they were very good skiers. But something has to be done. We have to recognize we have a problem in the city. I don't, I want businesses to open. We have business in the corridor of the back central neighborhood in Gorham Street. It's tough for these people. They're facing all kinds of obstacles, and I hate to say it, but that's what they're doing. We have gateways into the city off the connector. You look to the right, and you see piles of junk. People are saying to me, "What's happening there?" I'm embarrassed by it. I mean, I don't say it to hurt anybody's feelings, but we have to do something about it. Now, is it the city, and what did the governor say? And I like Governor Baker, but he said, when the lady spoke, "Oh, that's a city issue. You talk to the city." No, it isn't, Governor. It's a state issue. It's a community issue. It's not your responsibility, Madam Manager. It's everybody's, in this city's responsibility. It is the state's responsibility, the state rep, the Congresswoman. We need money. It's going to take money. We need a building. And further down, you'll see, and I'm trying to segue it in with the Coca-Cola motion, if we ever could buy that place and use that facility to put them in, I know it's going to take money, but we need, we need help. We need help. And I set a summit, because I can't, I don't know the answer. I can't do it myself. This council, we can't do it. This is a big problem. And I'm trying to say, I want this city to shine. I want people that have problems to be corrected, to be looked at, to not be thrown aside and scattered away, and let's hide them. Let's try to help them. And I'm, so, these are the things that I'm talking about. I don't know what to do, but I can't just say nothing, and I can't just sweep things under the carpet. I can't. It kills me when I go to work, getting up from a nice warm bed, and I see people sleeping in the elements. Oh, my God, I can't, I can't deal with it. And our police are being inundated with people that are strung out. They're doing drugs right in front of you. Let me just say this. We have ordinances, and an ordinance says that you can't go into the park from dusk to dawn. It's thrown out the window. The motion, the ordinance is thrown out the window. We have an ordinance that says, "No loitering," but we're doing it. We're turning a blind eye to this. I mean, and the courts don't want to see it, because this is, you know, what is, what are they going to do? And the people that are doing this knows that it's going nowhere. It's like a vicious cycle. We need help. We need help. And I'm sorry to bring it up, but somebody has to say it. I don't want to say it, but I love my city so much, and I see it going downhill, because we're turning a blind eye to something that should be addressed. Everybody's, it's everybody that has to pitch in. I don't know what to do. I don't. That's why I set a summit. Maybe we could come up with ideas and money and try to get help nationwide through the federal government or something. And the elected officials higher up should say, "Well, it's not like we're spending money on every single community. Every community seems to be doing okay." I'm telling you the truth when I say people are being dropped off on the border of Lowell, and they're saying, "Go for the services here. They'll take care of it." That's not right for us. That's not right. But they're here, and we can't, we can't just let it happen and explode and go more, bigger and bigger. We can't do it. So I'm trying to address it. I haven't got the answers. I'm not saying I do. I don't. And I don't say, "Madam Manager, it's your fault. It's nobody's fault. We have a situation that needs, that is a number-one issue in this city, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't want it to get worse, and I think it is." I'm sorry to have to say it, but that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Noon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, every one of us have seen an increase in homelessness in a city. I think most of them, we own it. We own it from our neighboring city and town. There's no question about it. And I also know that the city administration, along with its partner, have worked very hard, partner like Life Connection, CTI, and other. I know we use CARE- I know we use CARE Act to help as well. Council Mercy is correct. This is not just Lowell problem. The state needs to step up and help as well. It has, it need to take a collective approach, bring all these resources together to address it. I remember a year and a half ago, you, Madam Manager, have a city manager task force on homelessness, right? They were talking about Housing First approach, right? You don't question. There's no criteria. You don't question whether you have mental health or you have drinking problem. You come in, and then we have service to help you. I think the wraparound service need to, we need to work with our partner to focus on the wraparound service, not just housing, not just housing for homelessness. And that's not going to work because they go back, do it again because they have some mental health issue, because they have other issue. Maybe also on top of just service on detox mental health, but also employment as well so that they have something to go to. This is not a one-day, one-month solution. It's take time. It take all of us working together. I know residents saw the uptick, and they are alarmed by it. Rightfully so. But that's not mean that you and this council sit idle and do nothing. We're working on it. It's just urge patient. But, you know, work on it, Madam Manager. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and then Councilor Smaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and we'll get you the full report and recommendation. As both Council Mercy and Councilor Noon had mentioned, you know, we had formed a task force over two years ago to work on this. That's still going. It's not called the Task Force now because we came in with recommendations that this council adopted and that we have been implementing, including hiring a homeless coordinator and a number of other steps. It's the Homeless Coordinating Council now, but it's made up of all the key players around the city. We have another meeting coming up October 13th, and I'll report on that. But here are some of the challenges. Housing first for certain individuals is clearly the way to go. We've been trying to do that to get developers and development of these particular type of housing where people who are ready to live, they can live in what's similar to an efficiency apartment or a studio unit with services on the premises. And CTI has looked at a few properties. SMOCK has, is trying to buy a property from the Housing Authority. This has been tied up in HUD all through the pandemic. We haven't been able to move on that. So it's a slow process, but it's important because with the people who are outside, let me just be clear. We had a meeting just the other day. The shelter has room, but people don't want to go. So we have open beds at the shelter for both men and women, but they choose not to go. We have open beds at the hotel in Chelmsford, where we've been housing people since, almost it was going on a year. And that's being extended through state cares, other, you know, monies for that. We have empty beds. There are people who are outside who do not want to go inside. That's a challenge. That's been a real challenge. And there's a lot of mental health issues. There's a lot of substance abuse issues. There's many reasons. But that's a, that's a temporary fix, really. The long term is exactly some of the things that have been mentioned, that Councilor Mercy mentioned, in terms of getting the support and the assistance. You know, Mary Shannon Thomas has been working with providers across the spectrum in Lowell. She's put together a list of 200 individual, homeless individuals that she meets weekly with the providers to say, "What are we doing for John Smith? What do we, how are we getting them services? Where are we going?" And so there's a lot of work being done. Life Connections, we've supported Life Connections by giving them money so they could hire outreach workers and to provide beds in the sanctuary. So we're trying to, and I believe Life Connections has some open beds as well. So, and they go out into the field, out into the city to tell people, "We have beds. We have food. We have help." But there are certain people who don't want to do that. It's not just out of the city. It's out of state, people who are showing up on our doorstep. And that's a real challenge. And so, you know, and that happens almost on a daily basis. But it's not something that we can, as you say, ignore, and we're not. And it's something that we need to double down on and work on. The, the issue, you know, in terms of the challenges, the homeless camps, you mentioned the one that is on state property between Gorham and Dutton Street, and that's where the trash is being, you know, we've been working with the state to pick up the trash. We've, we were picking it up, but, you know, this is their, their camp. We couldn't have DPW pick it up. It was riddled with needles and all kinds of things. So we'd have to hire an environmental company to pick it up. You know, this just is not sustainable. It's not healthy. It's not right. And we've been working with, with them, and they will be, they've been out telling people, letting people know, "This camp is going away. We're going to move this off the property." And I believe the date we have is October 18th. So there is work, and MassDOT has been working. To Councilor Child's motion earlier, we will go back to them about those cleanups. It's happening everywhere, but this is something that, you know, as a, as a community, we do have to, you know, take the bull by the horns and, and deal with this. And so, you know, as I said, you know, the Lowell Connector is what we call the list, the 200-person list, has been active and working. We've worked with DHCD to get housing, as I said, in the hotels. We've worked with, you know, the Lowell Housing Authority has, has programs that they're working on. We've supplied money to the Elliott Church to have day programs so people can go in there during the day. There's just, you know, a number of, there's no one solution. There's, it's just going to take multi-prongs of a solution. And I do agree, this has to be more of a regional focus. It has to be approached both from the federal government and the state government because this is 100% not sustainable for any community. So I appreciate the motion. As I said, I'll, you know, all of the people who are on the Coordinating Council, who are working very hard in this area. I think that's kind of similar to what you're talking about, Counselor. It's just everybody around the table and then just bringing, you know, more to the, so we do have a meeting on October 13th. And, you know, I'm happy to have, you know, if counselors want to come to the meeting, we'll let you know about that.
Yes.
Because, you know, we have, we do have some, you know, serious challenges, but they won't go away on their own, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, for that report. I mean, you addressed a lot of issues that I wanted to raise. These are two good motions. There's no question about that. And all of us are being asked, you know, "What are you going to do or what can you do about the homeless?" And I think especially over the past few years, a number of us have brought up motions on various areas. I know myself, just in the South Common or by the railroad tracks, about, you know, cleaning up the areas and the areas that have been cleaned up, and they do come back. And you're correct. If you talk to a lot of these people, they don't want to go into the hotel or go into where they are. Programs like Middle, on Middle 6th Street where they have the beds, but they have no programs for them in the, during the day, and they're dumped out on the street. There's no question, this needs a multidisciplinary approach to this, and you have started that process. There's no question about that. Because you have to have mental health. You have to have health. You have to have the police. You have to have all of these organizations working together to try to solve this problem. I was really taken back when the governor said this is a local issue. But sometimes they find when an issue is so great, it's your problem, not my problem. And it's sort of passing the problem onto the city. But if there was any one time when the state and the city and the federal government have to work together, it's now. And, you know, a suggestion I'd like to make to the council and to the mayor is perhaps we need a subcommittee just on the homeless because it's that type of an issue. It's, you know, there are separate subcommittees that you can share some of the information. But the thing is, I think this is such an important issue to have the team that you've developed to be able to have some members of the council directly, you know, dealing with that issue and giving the reports back to the council. It's just, it's just a suggestion. But the thing is, all of us have suggestions. You have the work. But I think at this point, I think what we need from you, Madam Manager, besides the suggestions that were made in these motions, is to be able to come back to us and say, "Okay, this is what I need from the council. This is what, you know, direction we have to go in. We're going to have to involve the state. We need to get the delegation." I mean, you work with them every day. I mean, I know that. It's, the communication's going on. The dialogue's going on. We're dealing with it every day. There's no question, the administration, and I know you, you'd like to solve it. How many times have you heard stories where somebody said, "Well, we were shocked. I brought some friends in from Westford, say," or something like that, "and we were going to a local restaurant, and they were shocked by what they saw." No one today should be shocked in what's going on. I mean, if you go to cities like San Francisco, I mean, you want to talk major problems, you know, go to a place like that. So this is not an easily solvable problem, but all problems are solvable. So the thing is, I appreciate a lot of the efforts that have been made by this administration, and I appreciate where the motion is because the motions come out of frustration. And I think the question is, we need to have, you know, probably even more direct communication with the council and the administration regarding this matter. I think it has to be ongoing. You can't solve it alone. So just, these are parts of the suggestions, I mean. But I know, I mean, there's no easy magic wand, but money is one of the wands. I mean, if you, if you could develop the housing, develop the training programs, develop the, the health programs, those that need mental health help, but, you know, more consistently given, those are the issues that will make these things work. And we just need your guidance to help us hit that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. They're good motions, and I do feel it's the most pressing issue in the city because it has just a multitude of effects on other aspects, whether that's, you know, the downtown, but you mentioned the health, the safety. And I agree, we can't go this alone. Not only is it a regional problem, sure, the appearance is one thing, but it's heart, it's, it's, yeah, it's disheartening to see people and what can we do. And we do have services, and we do provide them. But I happen to think getting to the crux of the matter is, and there's no silver bullet, but I think in large part, the significant mental illness and substance abuse, those two components, I would say, and I don't have any number, I'm not an expert, but they're the contributing factors to, you know, to so many things. You know, maybe the state should take five, you know, some money from, from that $5 billion of COVID money because I think there would be a direct correlation. And we should open that Solomon Mental Health Center. I don't know how many times, and the next time the governor's here, wonderful to get money, but we need that facility open. The region needs that facility open. People need a place to go to. Yes. Will it need upgrades? Will it need staff? Yes. However, look at the flip side of what the state pays for, for housing or so many other services. So is that the silver bullet? No, but I really do firmly believe that would go a long way. And when we get the governor up here, I'm, this is not just Lowell, Massachusetts. It's Brockton. It's Boston. And those facilities need to be open there. Any, many of these patients are in the emergency room, and then they're back out in the street, and they're not getting the services they preserve, deserve. And I know you know all this, Madam Manager. I just think it's important to speak up. And, you know, the motion on location, I have to tell you, I'm a little bit surprised that we've, we have beds and, and we can't fill them because people don't want to go in. Usually, it's the opposite. So I appreciate the motion, and I know you're doing great work, you and your team. People, we do get contacted a lot, and you see the emails as well. What's going on at the end of the connector, these mounds of trash? I just learned the needles. We got to partner with the state. How we do that? Maybe it's a meeting in the minds with all the legislative leaders, but maybe a good chunk of that $5 billion should go to where it's really needed, and that's mental health and substance abuse services. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Councilor Elliott just mentioned, you know, so many of the issues are related to untreated mental health issues and drug addiction. And, you know, for, I think the work that's happening where, you know, the city and nonprofits, you know, have a list, they're, they know the actual names of these individuals and are trying to directly connect them with services. But as you mentioned, Madam Manager, many of these individuals don't want to avail themselves of the beds or the other services that are, that are available. And those individuals who, you know, likely as a result of mental illness or drug addiction, you know, who are choosing to sleep outside in the elements, I think in often cases are not really of a sound mind to be making those decisions. And we do have, you know, laws in the Commonwealth related to civil commitment for those who presented danger to themselves or others because of those untreated issues. And, you know, this is something that has come up. I try to follow the discussions around in the city of Boston, what's come to be known as Mass and CAS. There's no issue that we're dealing with in the city of Lowell that isn't being dealt with on a much larger scale in that area of Boston. And one thing that has come up in that discussion, and it was actually on the front page of the Boston Globe on Sunday, was bringing online new facilities to provide people with treatment, those who may not voluntarily enter treatment but who are in desperate need of it because there are dangers themselves, and bringing new facilities online to, to handle people who are civilly committed for drugs or mental health issues. And I'm wondering if maybe just as, as part of the, the response to this motion, if, if it can be included, you know, what, are our civil commitment laws adequate to treat these individuals? What are the, the facilities that are available in this region? Because it's really, it's a part of the problem, I think, that hasn't really come up in the, in the discussion yet. Obviously, the first priority should always be to get people to voluntarily get the services they need. But I know that's, that's not realistic in all, in all circumstances. And, and it's really important, I think, that, you know, to prevent unnecessary death, to prevent unnecessarily bodily injury to themselves or to others, that our civil commitment laws do work. And I do think it would be important as part of the broader discussion, whether as part of the, the response to this motion or part of the, the work of the, the committee that's working on these, these issues, that that information is, is provided because it is an important piece of the puzzle to ultimately solving this problem. So I, I just bring it up to, to really ask that, that it be, it be included as, as part of the response, what, what we can do to improve those systems.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yeah, you bring up a good point. I did see Sheriff Tom, Tom, who had said that they may have to be put in custody against their will. And there, I can tell you, there's no such facility today. There are rare circumstances where that does happen, yes. But our experience dealing with certain individuals who both the police and our coordinator felt needed to be sectioned because they weren't, because of a number of issues, and the court disagreed. But more importantly, they all have a PAC team. Many of them have PAC teams, which means they have a psychologist. They have a prescribing psychiatrist. They have, you know, four or five people assigned to them or vice versa. And the PAC team didn't agree that, they thought they were doing just fine. Now, talk to anybody downtown. They'll tell you, "They're not doing fine. They're talking to cars," you know, "and, and, you know, they're walking and, and, you know, they're walking in the middle of the street. But, you know, so it is a, it is a challenge, it will take a different way of thinking. I do want to be clear that, you know, the state has, we have worked closely with them, DHCD, about funding especially the temporary shelters and the hotels. And, and they have been supportive of that. Where we need a lot more coordination is the things we're talking about right now. How do you, where do you bring people who need that inpatient and mental health, substance abuse treatment? Where do you put people when there isn't that kind of permanent, sustainable housing with supportive services on premise? So, they'll stay in housing, so they'll be there, someone there watching and helping them through a number of the challenges. That's where I think, together with the state and the federal government, we need to do a much better job. Because when it comes to individuals who are homeless, we, we, we don't have many answers for them. And so, there is a lot of work to do here. But again, we're not in this, we're not the only one. And so, I think, you know, it's, it's trying to get a lot of cooperation around everyone. So, you know, excellent points raised and, you know, challenges that, as, as difficult as it is, it's not an insurmountable situation when we are talking about, you know, a couple of hundred people. It sounds like a lot, but we should be able to, one by one, try and help these people. And, and that's one of the, the goals of the coordinating council is, you know, let's understand what services they're all getting. Are they talking to each other? Is anybody trying to put them in housing? Those are things that, you know, hadn't been done before and that we've been doing with our coordinator. She's brought all the agencies together to the table. So, a lot of work, but, you know, there's, there's also a lot of need to have further resources available for this, this challenge.
Thank you. Anything else on these motions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Mercia have, request city manager have DPD explore the possibility of acquiring ownership of the vacant Coca-Cola property at the Industrial Ave. For future use, seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard that the Coca-Cola company on Industrial Ave you is, they're moving or they're, they're going out business there or there. I don't know actually what the story is. And so, I'm asking if probably the DPD could check into it and see what's happening. I'm sorry they're leaving, because there's a business, a industry that we get taxes from. But on the other hand, I wish we had the money so we could buy it. That would be a start, if we could have that building available to put the homeless in, to provide the services that they need. A little help from all the different organizations we have in Lowell to fund that so that we can give them the proper help that they need. There's a lot of people on the street that, when we say they're homeless, they're homeless, but they couldn't sustain a house on their own, they couldn't sustain an apartment. They're mentally ill, they're, they're drug addicts, so they can't have a roof over their head like that. They need someone to supervise them, to, like a facility to keep them in and probably type of detox for them. What happens is, you go in a detox and you're there for 30 days, that's not enough time. It's not enough time and we need a facility to do that. I don't remember where it is, but one sheriff had it, had a jail. And it was a section of the property that they had a lot of units in, but it was all empty. He offered that to the city, to have the people that are homeless put in there, not that they're locked in, but to give them a co, a bed, a roof over their head, to get them out of the elements. So, I don't know, if the DPD, maybe we need it for something, maybe we need it for a police department. I don't know, maybe it's big enough. I don't know how big it is, but maybe we could use it to some degree. Is it in good shape? We don't know that unless we send DPD there. And this is the gist of that motion, to take a look at that. Maybe we could use it. And I don't know what they're asking for, and I don't even know if we had the money to buy it. But I wish I won the lottery, because I'd buy it myself and try to turn it into something and get the people off the street. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion, Councilor Drinkwater requests manager and proper department prioritize the painting of the crosswalks in close proximity to schools. Seconded by Councilor Conway, Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few faded crosswalks in proximity of schools were, were pointed out to me. So, just hoping to, those can be taken care of. I guess this, this motion essentially speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Councilor Drinkwater, 1111, request city manager provide a report regarding the feasibility of using ARPA funds on a cost-sharing program for homeowners to install sewer backflow preventers. Seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was pointed out to me that there are a few cities in the Commonwealth that do have cost-sharing plans for, for residents who wish to install backflow preventers in, you know, in their combined sewer systems, essentially just a, a one-way valve, you know, for certain properties that do experience back, backflows of, of water into their, their basement. So, I know that within the ARPA funding, your water and sewer isn't an acceptable use. I don't know if, you know, these devices that essentially connect to private residents would be allowable. But I thought it was a good program that other cities have, have used just to defray the cost for homeowners who, who see the value in these backflow preventers. So, if it, if it is allowable, just wanted to explore the possibility of using it for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Councilor Samaras request city manager provide a report regarding the cost that will, that will be incurred to eliminate the odor coming from Duck Island. Seconded by Councilor Rourke, Councilor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, I, I know, I do realize that a lot of work is being considered to be done on Duck Island because of the overflow, because of the rain, type of rainstorms that we're having now. And we know in the future, we're going to have, they're going to be far more severe. But in going out and talking with the residents, I was in the area, you know, by the, by the river, a couple of Saturdays ago, and the smell from the plant was just not acceptable. And in talking to some people, you know, they said sometimes, one person said, well, you sort of get used to it. But I don't know how you can get used to something like that, like that. And we know we have, we know there's the equipment out there to, when odors are going up the chimneys or whatever type of mechanism they're going through, that can be cleaned and washed and the air can be changed. We also know, I guess, the odor does come too, from when the sludge trucks are being, come in to remove the sludge and the doors are open to the area, that a lot of the air, it just escapes out into the air because the, the doors are open for a period of time. So, there's a number of issues, how the sludge is handled and, and the chimneys. I'm just asking for a report to see what would it cost to not only adequately treat the water going into the river, which is very important, but what we can do regarding the odor? Because everybody living in, in that area, I mean, it's, it's, it's really unacceptable. So, let's see what we can do. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, I'm going to start with the votes. See, a motion from, to bundle the votes, Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Elliott. Motion to bundle 62, 63, 64, 65. 62, vote authorize city manager execute license agreement with Wynn Managed Properties LLC. 63, vote authorize city manager proceed under MLG 30B move management consulting to five years. 64, vote transfer 103, 777 for DPW Barrel Collection. And 65, vote transfer $65,0245 for Pollard Library. The motion to adopt by Councilor Samaras, seconded by Councilor Rourke, roll call?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Councilor Elliott?
I just had a question, question, or it's actually kind of good news, I think, on 6.2. This is a lease agreement with Wynn Managed Properties. And there was designated commercial space, there's no interest in that commercial space, correct, Madam Manager?
Well, not at the moment, but this is going to be temporary.
Temporary, right, but it's still $1,800 a month.
$1,800 a month and they, they need it while they're leasing, that, we don't expect it to be long-term. But at the moment, it seemed like a reasonable thing to do to have.
So, in the meantime, will we try to, will you try to steal that commercial space or, yeah?
Yeah, we, we will, you know, we're, you know, obviously, there'll be, you know, that building full and so that's going to have more potential customers. Still going to be a fair amount of construction going on, so.
Right.
But we will certainly, you know, see what, what there is. But Wynn asked to go in there, again, not, not for a huge amount of time.
No, it's good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Mercia, have a question?
Yes, thank you very much. On the transfer for the Pollard Library, $65,245, this is something to meet the MAR in fiscal year '22, understand that? So, are we going to have to do this every year specifically for the library? Or can we just make it a given or something? I mean, I know prices go up, but it seems to me that they're coming before us for this and then they'll probably have to come back next year. Can't we just, you know, say that we're going to do this every year for them? Or could we make some commitment like that?
We can certainly, and we've talked to them about that, we can certainly look at as a part of a budget process. You know, the number changes and, and the amount changes. But this year, we did make a commitment that we would, as, as they came before the council. Mr. Baldwin, if you want to.
So, we can't make this commitment every year for this particular price?
I would ju, just like to add, thank you, Madam Manager, that it, it is the intent for that to be the commitment. The board of trustees has come before the city council to advocate for.
Sure.
Five-year funding plan. It, it is only because of COVID and the impact on the budget that this became an issue where we had a potential to not meet the requirement.
Yep.
Every year, in order to be eligible for the Chapter 78 funding from the state, municipality must meet certain requirements, one of which is to increase the appropriation for the budget by two and a half percent every year. And it is only because of the sort of budgetary constraints this year that it became an issue. However, we have made a commitment to the trustees and to the council that in future years, we will work to get back on track.
And do you think it would be possible to sit down with the library trustees to try to compile a five-year plan or something? Wouldn't that be what we could do?
That's exactly what's happening now, Councilor Mercia.
All right. Please keep us abreast of the situation, thank you.
Councilor Elliott, did you have a question?
I'll say, Mr. Mayor.
I'll say, okay, roll call?
Milley?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow? Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, orders to the city manager, order 60-day trial. Listen to the word, the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts City of Lowell City Council, order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Move for, approved by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Mercia. Any questions, Councilor Mercia?
There were times when we had this report like this and it said, who made the motion for what? If you can remember that. I don't see that here, but I did make a similar motion to the parking area as designated as church parking. I had a motion like that. I don't know if that's my motion.
Yeah, this is in response to your motion.
Oh, good, okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Milley?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow? Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
I need you.
Thank you. Orders from the city manager, ordinance to create physician salary contact tracer. Given the first reading, motion to refer to a public hearing on October 12th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Motion by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Conway. That's it, right?
That's it.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee Report, Councilor Elliott?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Subcommittee met this evening regarding a motion that was referred concerning bad bills from the school department. The CFO has met and I have spoken to the school department business manager and they provided a report to us. In large part, I'll be brief. The essence of the bills are related to a couple of issues. But let me also say, let's see, in addition to the members of the Subcommittee, Councilor Conway, Councilor Noon, Councilor Drinkwater was in attendance, as well as Councilor Mercia. Mr. Baldwin presented a, as well as Alston Chamber presented a report on the status of these bad bills, about $140,000. In large part, they relate to two issues, costs related to in district and outer district, placement of special education students, as well as the transportation costs associated with some of those students, as well as other students. There are some bills also related to homeless student services as, as well. So, the outstanding bills include tuition, student support, translation services in the school department. The total is actually $141,986. There's no additional cost to the city, there's no additional cost to, to the school department. These funds are placed in a stabilization fund. They can be paid from one of two places, a circuit breaker fund or the special ed stabilization fund. And that's, that's where the funding will come from. These are difficult cases, they're not predictable. Students come into the district in need of services at all times of the year. And however, according to the state law, because the bills come in after the fiscal year, it has to come before. So, these are not for, these are not bills for, you know, orders that are not being placed after the year, procurement, I'm being a little facetious, not, it's not pencils and, you know, all these other things that we have seen in the past. This is for, this is for special ed homelessness and trans, transportation. That's a report of the Subcommittee. The recommendation is, from the Finance Subcommittee to the full body, is to recommend that the administration bring forward the appropriate votes to address these, to address these bills. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions on the report? So, motion to accept the report, the report of progress and accept the motion. Was there a motion made, you said?
There was a motion made, Mr. Mayor, that the recommendation be adopted by the full city council for the administration to bring forward the appropriate votes to address these, these prior year bills.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Yeah, so motion made by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercia.
Mr., there was only one last part, um, I know that there had been some discussion on a local radio station, and this is just for informational out of the, um, subcommittee relative to, um, uh, school resource officers. Mr. Baldwin did provide information relative to the appropriation of three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, um, that the city does pay for school resource officers. He was going to get the number of officers, um, to us in the future, but this is just by way of information, um, because I was called and asked to, uh, to mention it and it was, it, it relative to finance, um, but this money is credited to the next school spending. And, uh, the salaries are part of the annual, um, educational support, uh, to chapter seventy, so I just, uh, my question was asked, by our local radio station, WCAP, and thought it was important to bring that information forward, um, as part of the finance subcommittee report. And, um, that concludes, um, the meeting, we already spoke, there was another item, but it was regarding the city auditor search, we've already covered that. Report of progress, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Nine-three, wire inspector reports, uh, National Grid requests installation of new switchgear and electric conduit for power to the new parking garage at set one seventy-one Jackson Street. Two TC Systems Incorporated, AT&amp;T Gilmore Group requests installation of one hundred and sixteen feet of underground conduit at the intersection of Industrial and Reese Ave. Three TC Systems, AT&amp;T Gilmore Group requests installation of forty-four feet of underground conduit at Appleton and Thorne Dyke Streets. And four, National Grid requests to relay a gas main at eighteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-three Middlesex Street with a twelve-inch plastic gas main in sidewalk. No questions, the motion to accept and adopt the accompanying orders by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Rourke. Uh, petitions, uh, got two petitions, miscellaneous, Joseph. Miranda, for the benefit of Kevin Denny, requests installation of a handicap parking sign at seventy-two Otis Street. Need a motion to refer to the transport, transportation engineer for a report in recommendation by Councilor Conway, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Ten-two miscellaneous, Lillian Lamarche requests installation of a handicap parking sign at two eighty-two High Street. Need a motion to refer to the transportation engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Chow, seconded by Council Conway. Five-three communications, city manager requests out-of-state travel for three LPD and one LFD. Any questions? Motion to adopt, uh, where am I? Uh, motion to adopt by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Noon. Roll call.
Millie.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Nine years.
Okay. It's nine-thirty, we'll get through all these responses. Uh, communications city manager, motion responses, any questions on motion response A, enforcement of noise ordinance? Councilor. Is that me? No.
Chow.
Any questions on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for the, um, thank you to Superintendent Richardson for, for the succinct report. Um, I know that the police department is busy with everything from, uh, gunshots to taking guns off the street. Response to, uh, emergency calls, um, other traffic issues, but, um, they have been busy also with, um, traffic control. They gave an issue, uh, issue of, uh, before pandemic, uh, seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one citations. And out of that, including, um, a twenty-nine citation, uh, regarding to the slow riders and noises. And after the pandemic, um, uh, about, um, eighty-seven. I think, uh, my, my question through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, I don't know if, um, somebody from the law police department is able, is here to respond. We get this type of complaints from all over the city, but, um, I've been hearing more complaints from the, the back central neighborhood. I was wondering if the law police department, uh, were able to assign a cruiser to that area and talk to the neighborhood association as to, um, you know, the problems of low riders and noises. And pick, uh, like what days those typically happen, whether it's on a weekend and things like that. Just a response to that neighborhood in particular.
Uh, I'm not sure if Deputy Gullner is.
Yeah, he's available.
Deputy Gullner, um, and if he could answer.
Madam Manager? Um, Council Chow, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, we could definitely take care of the back central neighborhood, and this is an ongoing issue that's occurred over time. I mean, even when I was in the, uh, traffic bureau, the issue came up with the, uh, low riders and the noise and other, um, problems associated with that, that type of vehicle. We can definitely detail the, uh, step, our selective traffic enforcement program to conduct patrols over there. But additionally, uh, the superintendent has said we could send the, um, Neighborhood Action Unit, which is a lieutenant and four officers over there as well, to conduct, um, high visibility traffic enforcement in the back central area. That will, uh, put a lot of presence over there and hopefully deter some of that activity.
That, that's a great solution, it's perfect, thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any other questions on that one? Any, uh, motion response B, the payroll efficiency in the city schools, any question on that? Any questions on, uh, C, chief DEI officer APR finance manager hiring? Council Noon.
Just want to thanks Madam Manager for, uh, the report, um, as far as the, uh, number of candidate for the finance manager, uh, for the APA. How many people apply, Madam Manager?
I believe it was eight applicants.
Okay, and, and so the, the DEI offices just opened yesterday, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, so what's the time period for the, uh, before it close?
I'm not sure if it's thirty days.
Thirty day?
It could be, that's typically what we post.
One, one other que- one other question is, uh, is this individual house with you or with the H R?
Uh, it's through the manager's office.
Manager's office?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Madam Manager.
Any other questions, any questions on the eviction prevention mailing? Council Drinkwater, any ques-? Council Drinkwater, any questions on the mailing?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I had, uh, filed this motion at the time, um, the CDC had, had actually extended, uh, the eviction moratorium, um, and, uh, since I, I have filed the motion, the Supreme Court had actually ruled that the latest, uh, CDC eviction moratorium, uh, uh, was illegal. So the, essentially all, you know, um, all state and federal eviction moratoriums that had, um, been in place are now not in, not in place. I would say, uh, you know, the, the result, um, has not been as dire as, um, many have expected, largely because the, the state legislature, um, has ensured that tenants with a pending, uh, rental assistance application cannot be evicted while the, the application is pending. And, and both the state and federal government have been, um, wise in, in allocating a significant amount of money to rental assistance to, to prevent eviction. So while the program has been, uh, I think tremendously successful in, in keeping people in their homes and also making whole both, uh, tenants and, and landlords who have benefited from the significant allocation to, to the rest rental assistance program. The fact of the matter is that, um, not everybody gets the, the adequate information to, um, to apply, uh, to, to rental assistance or, or to avail themselves of, um, mediation that is available through, through the housing court. The fact of the matter is, many people upon, uh, receiving a notice to quit, the first step in the eviction process, just move out. So I know to deal with this, there have been a couple of municipalities that have, uh, sent out a mailing, uh, it's a simple mailing with, uh, the, the rights and resources that are available, um, to tenants potentially facing eviction and to homeowners potentially facing foreclosures, just to make sure that everyone has the information to avail themselves of the significant resources that have been made available during the pandemic. So, um, this report states that, uh, to, to send out, uh, a mailing of this nature, um, to, to every, um, mailbox and P O box in the city would come at an expense of about thirteen thousand dollars. I think when you think about the potential expenses it takes to, um, provide families or individuals who become homeless with housing again, um, a- after they've, uh, they've become homeless, um, those costs, I think, would far exceed the, um, the, the costs of, you know, some prevention, um, by making sure people have, have access to those resources. So, um, it, the, the, uh, response also states that this, uh, would li- likely be an allowable use under ARPA funding of which, uh, we know, we, we've been allocated about seventy-six million dollars. So, um, I, I think this would be, um, an effective use of, uh, a small amount of those, those ARPA funds. So, um, I would, uh, suggest that the, uh, the city council, uh, take a vote to move forward with, um, you know, designing and, and sending out a, a mailing, um, that will just allow residents to know of, uh, the, the rights and resources available to them to keep them in their homes. So, um, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Seconded by Council Elliot, any questions? Roll call on the most. Millie. Yes. Council Mercia.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council, uh, Rourke.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I probably should have spoken before the vote, but just to make the, the job of the manager's office a little bit easier, the courthouse does this, the civil department, every situation, uh, where this comes up, um, paperwork, referrals, applications for assistance are, are mailed out and sometimes even dropped off, um, to the, our renters. So, Madam Manager, maybe a, a phone call over there, they could help you, uh, link those addresses of those people that need, uh, the assistance.
Yeah, and we, thank you, Council, I think, um, we have gotten some of the information from you in the past and put it on our website, um, as well. But we'll, uh, we'll certainly coordinate with them because they are the, uh, source of all resources.
Thank you, anything else? Any question on Maury fence or Viver Way? Council Rourke.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, to, to Madam Manager, uh, I know people over there, uh, are hopeful, um, before the, uh, next year's, um, baseball season starts that, uh, this project can be completed, thank you.
Thank you, any questions on Mass Perk Coordination, Barbara Street, Berme, Colley Stadium?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Either I, uh, uh, dose off or you might have skipped, uh.
No, we're just going down the line, just speak up. Go ahead.
You might have skipped motion E, response.
No, go, just go ahead, speak on what, which one you want, we're just going right down the line, we're up to I, but go ahead. Which one do you want to speak on?
E.
E.
Yep, on the Maury School.
Yeah, just, yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I think I might have missed that one. Uh, th- thank you, Madam Manager, for the report and, um, to Christine Clancy and Christine McCall and Shannon Cohen for meeting with the law public school facilities to install the fence. Um, I, I would just ask, um, if, um, DPW could meet, uh, with the school principal and the staff also, just to get the input, um, so that way be done, um, properly, because I think they know the area best, if they could meet with them as well.
Yeah, I thought they coordinated, um, through the school with the, uh, principal, um, so. Make sure that they did.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Samaras.
Motion, aye, I just want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
We all said, okay.
Yep.
I just want to thank the city manager for the report, I, I know the, uh, evaluation of the Colley Stadium is ongoing, but it's nice to know, number one, because there were rumors that it's safe, I mean, as far as anyone, uh, sitting in the stands, but there are water issues and before the locker rooms are, are fixed, that, that has to be taken care of. But thank you and, uh, appreciate the ongoing report, thank you.
Sure, Madam Man.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, um, obviously, we're waiting for the, um, full report of the assessment, but, uh, the commissioner, um, and, and others have been over and inspecting the areas, including the locker rooms, um, to address some of the leaks as best they can. It, it, it's, it's only in one area and they're, they also have instructed everybody to stay on top of it. So it's not, um, it's not a problem during the season while, while the, uh, teams are using those.
Thank you. Any questions on, uh, J K or L, Rowley Farms, Greening, the Great Way, Gateway, Garcia Brogan? Any questions on that?
Uh, no, that's a work in progress, thank you so much for the report, it's a work in con- in progress, we appreciate it, thank you.
I just have one quick question from the chair on Garcia Brogan's, Madam Manager. Um, it said in the report, I believe, that we're looking for a full, uh, someone to take the restaurant as, like as is and run it as a full restaurant, is that the only option right now?
It is right now, um, Mr. Mayor, we'll see what the responses are, there is a full kitchen, I mean, that, that's, um, important, because, uh, any, any massive change or renovation would, uh, obviously come at the expense of the city. So we certainly are interested in seeing if there's, um, uh, people who, uh, who will run a full restaurant.
And what's the response on that, with the time? Is there like a time?
I'm on the Zoom, uh, the, through, uh, the, our fee was, is going to be issued on October sixth, due November ninth. Um, and there'll be a scheduled walkthrough on the nineteenth.
Okay, um, I mean, there are interested potties, but they don't want to run a restaurant. So is, the renovations are up to the city or up to the person that's going to?
Well, it all depends, we need to see the bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the comparative criteria lists a full-service restaurant as a highly advantageous, and that's how we would score it. So if someone is interested in the space, they should still submit a proposal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions on, uh, MN or OP? Public toilets, Indian, Indian Monument, Nottingham Street, or Gold Lowell? Any questions on the reports, Council Elliot?
Yeah, I want to go back, I'm sorry, I want to go back to, um, motion response J, which is Raleigh's Farm.
Yep.
I thank you for, for the response, Madam Manager, I just want to say, um, this came to my attention, uh, a while ago, and I've been speaking to Raleigh about it, uh, however, when I did bring it up in July, uh, unbeknownst to me that the, these two organizations, these two extraordinary organizations, um, had, uh, already gone to work on this. And I, I think that's, that's, that's great, you know, the motion to use CPC money, um, I did speak with Jane Calvin, I did not speak with Jessica Wilson, but, um, they were prepared to do that, and this is just an important, uh, application, in my opinion, it is a, the CPC will meet tomorrow night. I plan to speak on behalf of this, um, for the city, not just Patacaville, this is the last farm in the city, uh, known by so many. Uh, they're going to continue to work the farm for two more years for Christmas tree harvesting, but, um, I just want to applaud the Parks and Conservation Trust, they certainly have been leaders on so many issues in the city that makes all what it is today, uh, and, um, and I think this application is, uh, very significant, uh, for the preservation as well as the, uh, the educa- as the wildlife sanctuary, excuse me, as well as, uh, education center they're planning to dedicate to the local agricultural and community-based environmental education. So, uh, thanks for the report, um, not going to take any credit other than, um, thanking the two organizations and happy that I filed the motion, but they've already been well ahead and fingers crossed that this money will be allocated and, uh, and, and that resource will be utilized for generations to come, thank you very much.
Thank you, any other questions?
Can I?
Sure.
Just on the bathroom.
Yep.
Um, response, uh, this, uh, it, the administration is going to continue to evaluate, uh, there are some good recommendations of, uh, I think proposals anyway, that are worthy look, look, worthy of, um, looking into, but we're just, uh, I think we'll just sit back and, uh, wait for further information to come, thank you.
Thank you. Informational reports, Madam Manager? Uh, bond sale and then acting treasurer?
Yeah, um, if, if, uh, Mr. Baldwin. Yeah, if Mr. Baldwin would like to address the information regarding the most recent bond sale.
Thank you, I'll be brief. The informational item in the packet for the council is just to make you aware of a recent sale of bonds to finance various capital projects. As part of the bond sale, the city was able to refund some outstanding debt for a budgetary savings of over $400,000. This is a testament to the good management of the city and the support of the City Council for good finance. There is included in the informational item a rating report from S&amp;P. It highlights a number of factors as positive credit factors for the city. It is also worth noting that there, despite the strong management, strong economy, the city is still noted that we have a very large OPEB liability and pension liability that would need to be addressed before an upgrade could be considered. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is great news. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, yep.
This is great news and again, testament to the administration saving money and just the financial stability of the city and this is a positive consequence, if you will. So, I'd like to just go over the report in the Finance Subcommittee. So, if I can make that motion to refer this to the Subcommittee.
Motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Noon to refer this to the Finance Subcommittee.
Please, thank you.
Madam Manager?
The next informationalist, I just want to let the council know that I am appointing Allison Chambers, the Deputy CFO, to be the Acting Treasurer and Collector once Kelly Oaks is officially our auditor. So, Allison will certainly be able to do the job while we are in the process of a search and just so the council knows, the Collins Center will be doing that at no charge to us because we actually had an in-house candidate for the auditor. So, they will be assisting on that as well.
Thank you. Need a motion to accept the responses and accept them placed on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Any announcements, Madam Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell is proudly presenting its Person of the Year, which is Jay Lenahan. We are having that event on Wednesday, October 6th, at Lenzies in Drakett. Our keynote speaker is Derek Sanderson. It ought to be a good night. Any, my colleagues want to come, $75 a ticket. And they're raising money for, well, you know, with the Bridge Club. They have AA meetings, you name it. I'm thinking of going to Overeaters Anonymous, but that's another story. They have Gamblers Anonymous and many different programs, so, thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make an announcement, in the next meeting, according to council rules, it's going to be October 5th and we're on every week after that.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I just have three announcements. One, this Saturday, the second is Household Hazardous Waste Day at the DPW Building on Middlesex Street. It's limited to 120 people, there is still room. Registration is required. You can call, register online at lolrecycle.org or by phone, 978-674-4309. And items that are accepted, household cleaners, garden chemicals, automotive fluids, pool chemicals, oil, paint, and varnish, things that people often want to get rid of. The next announcement is that beginning next week on Monday, weekly yard waste pickup begins and that will be each week, I think, until the beginning, end of November, beginning of December. Monday, next week. And then last, I do have an announcement. The city is seeking, once again, snow plowing contractors for this next season. The application packets are available, you can pick them up at DPW at the Middlesex Street or call 978-674-1800. We're looking for all sizes of equipment, including pickup trucks, bobcats, and six-wheelers, 10-wheelers. The rates begin at $80 an hour and end up at, up to $155 an hour. And new this year, we're offering incentive rate, which adds $5 to the rate per hour if you do all, meet all deadlines by November 5th and you complete vehicle inspection by November 12th. We want to be ready in case the snow flies, so please do spread the word. When we've talked about it here, DPW has seen people contact. So, anybody listening, if you know someone who's interested in snow plowing, there's a wide variety of trucks that we're seeking, so please contact us. And that's it.
Motion adjourned by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Noon. Thank you.